Evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 4th, 2025 meeting of the capacity school committee. Would all members who are present please indicate so in roll call. Mr. Dial.
Present.
Mr. Evans.
Present.
Hannah is not currently present. This is Leslie.
Present.
The chairperson is present, giving us a forum panel of four members. So I will officially call the meeting to order this time and ask all who are present and able to please rise to the recitation of our nation's pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Constitution of America, to the republic which stands, nation, your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome again, everyone. With every town election comes the need to reorganize our school committee in terms of officers. We would have done this at the last meeting, but we did not have a full panel. I, I believe Mrs. Hannah will be here. So what I will do is maybe we will just get into the invited guest section. I'll go through public comment first and invite a guest and then maybe we can come back to that if that is okay with the committee, just to see if the same can arrive. I'd rather have everyone here for that, but we really can't go too much further without doing that. But I think I have not got any message to keep going to be here, so my just running late. So, public comments. If anyone has any public comments, I imagine everyone here in person is an invited guest, but if you do have a public comment, just simply raise your hand and I'll recognize you and you need to state your name and residential address. And this section of the meeting is reserved for comments or discussion points or thoughts, concerns that aren't related to something already on the agenda. If you have a point, it's related to something that's on the agenda, just simply arrive, wait until we arrive at that point in the meeting, we will hear you, hear your thoughts, discuss them. But otherwise, if you have something that's not on the agenda, please either make yourself known today in person or utilize the Q and A feature that is on Zoom and you can access Zoom using the the meeting information at the top of our agenda. I'll give everyone a few moments to do that. If they're watching at home, I'll look at the Q and A section. While I give everyone an opportunity to populate their comments, I'll just note that this meeting is being broadcast across that one four three TV and live streamed on Facebook as well. And as just mentioned, you can participate, participate in person or virtually, virtually or using Zoom. I don't see any comments in the Q and A section of Zoom. I don't see anyone that's here to make public comments. So we'll move on to our invited guest section. Superintendent Shannon, the first section of the invited guest is recognition of our superintendent student advisory council.
Yes.
Is everyone that you expect to be here for that year at this point? Because we can go to the next one.
We actually don't have, we don't have many students coming. They're very busy.
It's tough time here.
Sports, they have, yeah, they have exams. And so we actually, I think only one, but we would like to recognize all of them, so on their names, so maybe.
Do we feel that any would be coming?
We only had two, we only had two, Will being one and another student that said they were able to make it. That was it.
Okay. Do we want to wait or do we want to just do this part now?
I think we can do this part now.
Okay. Well, then I will turn the meeting to you momentarily. So you were able to represent, recognize the entire council, but also the student that is here.
Yes, excellent. Great. So first, I'm going to recognize all of the members of the superintendent student advisory council. This is something that has been ongoing for years prior to me. But it's something that I have continued and absolutely love. It's one of my favorite times each month. I get to sit with students grades seven through 12 to talk about what is going on in their lives and in the school. And they have been amazing. They are our main clients and they provide really good input and feedback that we are listening to. They have helped shape the district through their involvement and we're thankful to all of them for their time. And so this year's SSAC included, and I'm grateful to Nathan Astier, Ella Lynch, Grace Shaughnessy, Jack Kearney, Natalie Heffner, Emily Shayara Gibson, Amanda Fox, Dylan Jewell, Sparrow Wilson, Graham Simmons, Stephanie Williams, Luke Curley, Dominique Vecchiola, Amara Marshall, Ellen, Ella Rennie, Brendan Sullivan, and Charlotte Tappazinski. All of them have been great and several of them also participated on the strategic planning committee. And so they did a lot this year to support our district.
And then I have the pleasure of recognizing our wellness committee and this has grown over the past couple of years. And we included students in it probably, no, probably five years ago. And it was the best thing we ever did. And so we've had a very strong voice from our students and they've made a lot of great recommendations and changes that we have made. And so it's been an absolute pleasure to work with them. We meet four times a year and outside of that four times, they're actually doing some community work and so I just want to recognize them. And we have Will. It was right here. Oh, you got it? Okay, there you go. And so, so glad to recognize him in person. And in addition to Will, we have Nora Plassried, Caitlin Sims, Eden Teriaki, Teraki, Brooke Smith, Lila Jackson, Lila Jackson, Leila Hadad, Jack Gabriel, Quinn Kearney, Olivia Avangian, Avangian, and Erin Teraki too. So congratulations to all of them for such an amazing job and all of the things that they've done. And Will is off to Northeastern next year. But Will, where are you going to start? Yeah?
I will be starting with my first semester abroad in the Czech Republic.
Yeah, in Prague. So huge, huge. Yeah. So and Will's been a very consistent voice in the wellness committee. So you're going to be missed, but expect pictures from Prague. We hear all about it. So thank you so much.
Have fun on your big day on Saturday.
Well, most of the students aren't here, so I don't need to make any real comments here. Just move on because I saw the next invited guest who is going to talk to us about our high school French exchange student program. Mr. Grassman, could you come up and hello, how are you?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Sorry, I didn't bring my Clorox away. How is everyone today?
Well, how are you?
Fair. Been happy to be here and happy to present this trip. I'm really excited that thanks to the approval of another trip, the Guadalupe trip, it was quite a success. And I feel that there's positive noise building about the possibilities, about seeing a different kind of purpose to a travel experience, which is what I really enjoy offering, something where they're more infused with the culture. It's not so superficial and that years of practice and schooling really can pay off. And I saw that in Guadalupe with Grant Wilson and Dylan Jewell, they were, sorry, you're on, I'm filming here right now with their names. I'm putting it out there. We invited about 13 students that were local to our villa. And for three hours, Grant spoke nothing but French. It was wonderful. And even the shyest, so Dylan, fantastic too, hours and hours as well of French and not giving up. The shyest of students even had 10 to 20 minutes of just doing their best. And phones didn't come out until the last hour. That was the unexpected. Wow. I was like, wow. So I hope to do the same kind of thing. I hope to offer the same kinds of experiences and the same kind of growth for this proposed trip of December 2026.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Grassman. I don't know. I mean, this has been presented to us before. It's here today for official approval from the committee so that we can convince the program and allow our students to take advantage of the opportunity. I know that one issue that had been outstanding previously was the issue of ensuring that the host families were appropriately background checked through whatever process the, the French authorities had in place. And that has been sorted out. And so I don't know if there are any committee members have questions, you can just ask at Will. I won't call on everyone because this has been for the committee before. I have a long meeting, full agenda in front of us today. So any questions for Mr. Grassman before we seek a motion? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve?
Has anything changed since the last presentation, since the last, last group of details come into focus that we were aware of then?
The, the timing of the trip per December, the duration of the trip, which I found in the middle of the school year, students were worried about missing class. So it's been reduced to one full week to try to get a little bit more participation and less anxiety because students care so much here about their schoolwork. And the company that we're using, because they came in at a better rate and are giving us more of the tailored needs of what I'm asking for.
What's the, what's the cost again?
It should be $32 to $3,400 per student. And that is 12 students going, two chaperones attending.
They all stay in different host family houses?
Correct. And they ask that all the time. It could be with their friends. It's like, if they're both friends and you want to double up while you're here, we could possibly do that. Think about who's sleeping on the floor and who's not. It could be up to them. But yes, a priori in theory.
Okay. And just to confirm verbally, we did ensure that the French authorities conduct background checks on our host family. They're hosting our courses. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the 2025 French exchange program for the high school? Motion made by Mr. Evans. There's a second.
It's in 2026.
Yeah.
It is. Sure is. So in 2026. So
And the students turn out.
You still voted to do that?
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Evans. There's a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries by a unanimous vote. Thank you so much for providing this opportunity to the students. Grassman?
Very excited. And the students will be, French students from Strasbourg will be coming here in February of 2025.
Fun. 2026.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jedi mind trick. Next, we have our high school principal, Principal Brian Scott, to talk to us about the cell phone task force and potential changes in the cell phone policy. Mr. Scott?
So I will go through what I went to the last meeting, that day, laid out what the process was and what the results were. So I guess I'll just say any questions.
Sure. And so just to, I guess, want to provide you an opportunity to introduce, whatever you want to introduce, but to sort of review, this is going to be one of these three tier discussions that we have because it is an impactful policy shift or could be an impactful policy shift. So at our last meeting, Principal Scott presented that we had a task force that reviewed in the wake of the community read of next generation, we reviewed the cell phone use policy for our high school students who at the time had sort of unfettered use of them throughout the day. And we were reviewing whether that was appropriate in the best interest of our students. And we had a committee that met several times. Principal Scott went over that last time. We wanted to have the item on our agenda this week for full discussion for anyone that had any interest in it. I know that there is at least one representative here from the way to eighth movement that we have in capacity. So just want to provide anyone that wanted to share any thoughts from the community, either virtually or in person, the opportunity to do that. And then the school committee will have some discussion. Nothing will be decided tonight. We will take a vote at the third meeting, which will be the next school committee meeting. And that's when we will decide on ultimately what the policy for the next academic year will be for something. So I don't know. Sylvia, do you have anything?
I was actually here for the meeting before. I was going to go home and Zoom. I might as well just stay because I was very interested in what Mr. Roberts had to say. But I guess I just wanted to say I was thrilled when the task force, force was formed. I was, had shows, was so happy because myself and quite a few other parents just don't see a reason why kids shouldn't have access to their cell phone. The middle school has the, the way for the day. And as we know, just having a phone near us is like, can cause us anxiety or just like, we're addicted, we have to look at it. So I was just filled with that. And I guess just the one thing I just the feedback I heard when they did this pilot was that the kids were talking and they were laughing and they were loud. And I just, I, I mean, I could cry. It just makes me so happy because that's what it's about. School, school should be about, school shouldn't be about them staring at a phone at lunch or in the hallways. They should be interacting and having fun. So I'm just thrilled that we had this pilot. Excited to hear about it.
Thank you, Sylvia. Could you just for the, for the purpose of meeting and state your full name and your residential address?
April Sylvia, 40 Pharaoh Lane.
40 Pharaoh Lane. Please, the microphone, pick it up. We have someone listening to help somebody. Yeah. So thank you very much for sharing those thoughts. And thank you. We saw you on the, what's the magazine called? Stroll, right. So the group, the group, the way to eighth group.
My son was not happy with that.
No, no, hey, look, but it's getting the message out and it's, you know, I think it's an important consideration for everyone, a community issue. So thank you for all the work that you've done around that. We appreciate that. Anyone else? Any thoughts they want to share? Anyone that's watching online? Anyone else that's here? Mr. Leslie?
Do you feel as if there are workarounds to any of the challenges that were mentioned by families, staff or students? Because I'm looking at, I'm thinking, I think we could kind of work around some of these things, whether it's the use of a portal or, or, you know, an online bulletin that parents can access for, for some updated information about sports or other actual activities or things of that nature, you know, lockdowns and fire drills, of course, faculty have use of their phones. And, and probably having kids without use of their phones keeps information in the hands of adults during those emergencies. So I, I just was sort of sorting through and thinking that I was seeing a lot of like opportunities to sort of eliminate some anxiety, but I was just wondering from your perspective, whether or not you felt like there were workarounds to some of the concern.
I think it depends on the workaround or the issue, but yes, I do. I mean, I think in terms of communication, people have to change their habits. So that's a bigger lift than I think anticipate. Because I think we all have something pop into our head and then want to text our child, you know, don't, don't forget, catch the lay bus there to stay after for whatever, or somebody's picking you up. But we have landmarks and those have worked for a long time. So people can call the school, we can get a message to the student. We have morning announcements, we have we still have Chromebooks, so we have, you know, rooms where coaches could communicate with players. So I don't think in terms of communication, it's as big of an issue as people realize. I think the bigger challenge and it's just going to have to be communicated by kids is work. You know, if work is texting, your shift is changed. You have to open, no, you're not going to get it until three o'clock. And that's okay, you know, and I think people just have to get into different habits. I think in terms of the fire drills and safety, I think it's actually better. It's like you said, you're going to be with the dogs. Too much misinformation spread, it creates more chaos and the best thing you can do in an emergency is have a janitor. You know, from the fire chief down through building administration to the judges that gets, and we all have protocols in place. So, you know, I think that's actually a plus. I think the wifi issues can be fixed. You know, I don't think that's an intermeltable problem. I understand why they go on their hotspots. And even the N E S team visiting said that was an issue for them. So I think that's some plans to be remedied over the summer, but I think it's a fixed problem.
Those got fun to handle, but.
Right. Yeah. So I, yeah, I don't see anything that can't be addressed. I think, I think the biggest challenge is going to be changing people's habits. Now, and getting some buy-in because even if you, there are some people who you will convince to change their habits. And there are some people who will say, I don't care. I'm going to do it anyway. And it's going to be a challenge. You know, so the more we can be unified, the more it is. And I think it points to the message of the next generation and the subsequent reports is it's not just a school solution. It's not just a school problem. There are multiple stakeholders that need to participate in this.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? Again, this is just the sort of discussion meeting. I mean, no decisions are being made. Right? But anything else? Okay. Seen it. I don't think anyone shared any thoughts on it. Okay. Well, thank you for that, Principal Scott. You can stay right where you are for the next section of this invited guest portion of the agenda, which is a review of all the handbooks from all the schools. So all of our principals who are here, Principal Mills, Principal Sullivan, people like that, welcome forward to present any changes to your handbooks.
Mr. Sam, can you give me?
Yes. Yes, I can. Is that working out for you up there, Dr. Norris? Did you get it? Perfect. All right. Why don't we start with our littlest learners with Principal Goddard? There you are.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Lay it on us.
So the only updates we have are updating the mission vision at core and including the district motto and image of a graduate. We updated dismissal procedures. We did a little bit of work on that this year. We added language about unexcused absences for family vacation absences. A lot of these are going to be similar to Deer Hill. We added a sentence about the bullying prevention and intervention plan. And we edited for concise language, updated for a language for early release versus, versus half days to align the district calendar and updated websites and links so that they went to the right places.
Okay. Sensible changes. And it makes sense that it lines with Deer Hill. I mean, I think we're trying to make it so it's fairly uniform. We started a few years ago. Thank you, Principal Goddard. Any questions about any of the handbook changes to the Osgood handbook? Or move on to Deer Hill? Seeing none. Principal Sullivan?
Very similar list. We added an addition of the notice of non-discrimination. We added the addition of the new assistant principal as the CHS 504 coordinator. District mission, vision, core values, district motto, vision of a graduate, the removal of the equity vision statement, the early release versus half days, which is a special one of mine. I'm a champion of calling it early release. I'm so excited. You made it. An addition of language to family vacations, to say that they're unexcused absences. We also added on something different from Osgood. I have one thing that I think is different. An addition of a section on lockers because we borrowed some language from middle school handbook around lockers. And again, addition of language regarding the district's response to bullying. And we updated website links that are expired due to the launch of the new district website.
Then Principal Sullivan, any questions? Principal Sullivan, relative to the changes to Deer Hill handbook?
Just a quick one. It's probably for both Ms. Goddard and Ms. Sullivan around the changes to language. It's not changing policy, but just being explicit that leading early for a family vacation will be an excuse.
Yes, it was listed somewhere else that, well, it was, it was kind of like a, an exclusion. So earlier it says, these are the things that are excused. And so then in the vacation section, we had language around, you know, teachers aren't required to provide work in advance. We get back. And then we added kind of the converse of that by saying, please note, this is an unexcused absence. So it complemented the other section.
Thank you, Leslie. Anything else from anyone else? No, unexcused absence. Just sort of, I want to make sure, because everyone gets those, those letters. And, and irritated me the first time I got one. So, so maybe the rest of the committee can sort of explain the impetus behind those.
So the law is the impetus behind the letters. And that's something we're actually going to spend a little time working on next year because I think we actually need to get a little bit more closely aligned with the law. I think that it's really important for parents and families to understand that by law, we have to send communication out to families at a certain threshold of an absence. And then we're actually required to have meetings with families at the next threshold. And then beyond that, it becomes much more serious. Attendance is really important. When children aren't in seats, they don't learn. We understand things come up. We understand children get sick. We understand once in a lifetime opportunities. But things like regular vacations, early dismissals are not, not attending due to ski trips, things like that. They are really difficult for the operational part of school. Teachers have a hard time teaching half full of classrooms and our time is limited to teach students. So it's important to us to capture the kids for the 100, we only get them for 180 days. There's a lot of learning that happens in those 180 days. So it's important that we get them. So we are following the law. It is not something we have made up. It is a consistent law across all schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And it's something we are continuing to encourage families to attend. And I will say, like, even personally, I've had a child who has said, but that's an unexcused absence. Whether it's fused or not, you're still missing the learning. And as a district, we actually have to report student absences to the department of ed every single year. And the department of ed is is really making a strong push. They did last year and they are continuing to for schools to be more consistent with the law with regard to attendance. So I think that's an important factor for people to know.
And it's all absences that get reported, not just, just, you know, the, the unexcused ones. It's all of them. It all factors into when we do our report for you from the state, the progress report, that's all included. Yes.
All right. Well, thank you. I just, I, because I wanted everyone to understand why those things go out when I'm just being party keepers. We are required to do that.
We are.
So just want everyone to know that because I didn't, I didn't know that the first time I got one a long time ago. And I asked then Principal Pharaoh, was it really necessary? She said it was.
It is.
And it is, and it continues to be. Principal Sullivan or Principal Goddard, just, I'm obviously the update of the mission vision. That's what we just came up with in this.
Correct.
Okay. Stretch planning groups. And Principal Sullivan, could you talk to me a little bit about the locker section? What, what was the impetus behind that? And what does it say generally?
So it just explains that lockers are school property. Feel free to chime in because it's your language. And that it's school property that we have the right to go in lockers and that students are responsible if they damage lockers or families would be responsible if they damage lockers. I think it's all buckets.
Okay. Great. Sounds sensible. Any other questions?
I would just add that some of these changes are for alignment purposes. And then some of them, we actually sent all of our handbooks off to our school attorney. And so some of the changes were her recommendation.
Okay. Seeing no other questions for Principal Sullivan. We'll move right on to our middle school, Principal Mills.
Yep. And that was a perfect transition from Superintendent Shannon because all of our changes are either about consistency across the district or advice from our council. So just
Yours is the only multi-page one.
You have some extra detail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the number of people involved in the law profession, I feel like, and you would expect.
I appreciate the detail.
Yeah. So I updated general school information. Obviously, we do that every year, dates, calendars and so forth. As was described at Osgood and Deer Hill, we included the recently approved mission core values motto and vision. Down to the bottom, page 41, make up work. Based on our legal counsel's advice, there was a line about kids not being allowed to make up work if they miss class due to disciplinary reasons. And we had to remove that. Even when a child misses class for disciplinary reasons, they're still allowed to make up their work. Lockers. This, I already had the section that Principal Sullivan had mentioned, the lawyer's recommendation included lawyers are subject to reasonable, I'm sorry, lockers. Lawyers from that school are subject to a reasonable searching. Just a reminder to students, I think it's, and Deer Hill handbook is consistent with ours. A non-consistency and lawyer change with page 25 on our dances and social events and school activities. There had been a section about guests and we've found in order to maintain a safe environment that we are removing kids' ability to invite non-school members. We had a couple of incidents over the last couple of years where nothing, nothing happened that where anyone was hurt, but we did have students just arrive and try to mix in. And our dances are very well attended. We usually have two thirds, at least two thirds of the school. So to have people who are teachers don't know, kind of mixed in. So to have people who are teachers don't know, kind of mixed in and maybe their behavior being inappropriate, we just thought it was a bad situation. So our dances are really for our students. So we proposed removing the section about guests. Next section, page 28, where there is a statement about harassment being obviously not allowed. The lawyer's advice, she thought we should make sure that we include on the basis of protected class, including race, color, religion, nationality, sex, sexual orientation, age, which was already there, but also include gender identity along with ancestry and disability. So she made sure that protected classes were in line with the law. Dress code, dress code is school committee policy. What we added is just a set of the section based on the counsel's recommendation and does not violate the rights of others. At the end of that, to reflect these important rulings. The page 32 sections around drugs and alcohol. The sections had previously stated that there would be a minimum of five days suspension and instead replaced with the district holds a disciplinary hearing in accordance with the laws. So 37 agents reporters recently, last couple of years have promulgated to protect due process for students. And she wanted to make sure that our, those serious infractions still mention the due process as protected by those laws. So that's page 32 and page 33. And page 36, we, and I could probably do 36 and 37 together, in school and out of school suspensions. We removed the old language and replaced it with the language that comes out of the 37 three quarters that really specifies the due process rights and the steps that school administration has to follow before suspension, which includes having a hearing and putting really important relevant details in writing and providing to the parent during the hearing as well as the meetings to explain the consequences. Once again, that this comes out of the law, but you know, the law really was a reaction to the schools around the state and maybe an earlier time where students would just be sent home quickly, just say, you know, just, just set out without really having any due process. So the law really protects it and organizes our steps. We've adopted that in practice. We just needed to make sure our handbook reflected it. So all the way between in school and out of school, all the way to page seven, which is page 38 of the handbook, emergency removal, same thing. It just basically specifies the steps we have to follow to protect due process in the event that a student has to be removed for the safety of the school pending a suspension hearing. And we go to page eight. In the update, which refers to page 40, update long-term absence. And what we did here is we updated our language around times where students might need tutoring because they're out of school for a long time. So we changed it once again on the lawyer's advice from a parent can make arrangements to having the parent refer to a very clear policy that's cited a little bit later in the handbook on page 44. And that, that appears on page 10, 11, 12, that policy. Page 40, family vacation, I'm sure I've lost everybody. Page nine, family vacation, we allow for the district-wide practice. We'd already said that it was an unexcused absence, but extended absences may result in unenrollment from school. That would be, you know, 10, 15, 20 consecutive days because of extensive travel may result in unenrollment. Makeup work. On page 40, page nine, as we brought sure of the document, we included in our makeup work section, the existence of our Bright program where a student is absent for five consecutive days, they could be referred to the Bright program to help them re-enter school and get caught up. Update student dismissals, we just included the phone number because previously we had said that parents have to send in a written request before the dismissal. But in reality, parents should be able to call the office to request a dismissal. It happens frequently. And then the last really large change was the adoption of temporary home or hospitalization education tutoring when students are out for a while. And that's consistent across the district.
All right, thank you very much, Principal Mills. Any questions for Principal Mills relative to those handbook changes there?
Mr. Evans. So on the adding the phrase for the dress code does not violate the rights of others to this, that just strikes, I don't understand that sentence. So there's a, this recent court case, just because this is something which is a hot button topic. So just in a clean format, what, what does that mean for our students or?
Judicial court had said that students do have a right of expression to their dress in school, but they don't have the, the right isn't extended to maybe a message. That would be offensive or make other students in school feel unsafe.
Thank you.
Or violate their.
Thank you. I agree with you, Mr. Evans. I just, the reason I brought for me as well, I understand the court case came down, but I guess if counsel, counsel had proposed that language, I guess. So.
Well, now if we have questions, we have a very reasonable explanation of why we're here.
Sure, sure, sure. I'm just, I had the same concern. I guess they're dealing with this issue all the time. I feel like that's the appropriate language.
Yep.
Comfortable with that.
And the only understanding is it's separate. It's not just, I don't like the shirt. It's going to violate.
Right, and that's what, that's kind of what my concern with it was, is a little bit vague, but again, I'm not going to argue if counsel, you know, I'm sure they're updating, he's making these updates to handbooks en masse throughout the state, so I'm not going to be someone that's going to try and put their spin on it.
The decision outlines from criteria for what would constitute violating the rights of others.
Great, okay.
Are you guys doing any sort of staff training on how to identify stuff that might trigger this? I guess how, what, how does this look at communication beyond just revising?
Similar to how dress code violations work in general, but teachers questioning something, they typically report it to the main office and then the administrators have conversations with those kids. And that gives the administration the opportunity to either get in conversation with the teacher to determine if yes or no, it violates the dress code. I think it works the same way it has worked, it's just adding another category to it. But yes, having a conversation with the staff so they know that there's an update, I think is important.
Anything else? Okay, so why don't we just do it individually?
We have one more.
I know it seems.
Sorry. I have been since the early morning hours anticipating this. I don't know how I, in all the excitement, I just must have forgotten, but please, Principal Scott.
Yeah, I mean, what they say. We had some technical changes, updating personnel, updating, you know, library records to goodie books, that type of thing. We had some legal language that was updated for representation from council. We had some health and home hospital language that was updated to reflect current practices. And we really only had a couple of more substantial changes. One was that we created an honor code that's consistent with the vision of the graduate. And that was at the recommendation of school council to put some clarification to what we expect in terms of student integrity and work. So that's the beginning of the updated handbook. We did update some language on image altering technologies that continues to evolve. And we did that to expand the scope of what is prohibited, to provide some educational context for it, to offer some supports for students and to provide exceptions where that might be pervasive in our class, for example. We also will update whatever the recommendation is in terms of cellphone usage. So those are the three big major changes.
Okay, thank you, Principal Scott. And not to make light, obviously, handbooks are important, especially in disciplinary situations because that's what controls. But these changes are all heavily vetted and it's, the group that talks about them, the council talks about them, council, CIL, and then council, legal council also reviews them. So, you know, we appreciate these, these concise summaries of the changes, with the exception of Principal Mills in depth.
I appreciate it, man.
We appreciate Principal Mills very much for giving him a hard time because, you know, it's the end of the year, why not have a little fun? Any, I'd like to approve them one at a time, so we'll just quickly do that. All in favor of approval of the changes to the Joseph Osgood School Handbook as presented by Principal Goddett here tonight?
Should we do a motion in second, move process?
I'm asking for a motion.
Oh, my apologies. Just said everyone.
He didn't ask for a motion.
He didn't ask for a motion.
Thank you, man. In time. Hopefully, Mr. Dial won't be vice chair for much longer. Is there a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dial, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Evans, all in favor? Aye. Opposed. Sentience. Okay, that motion carries unanimously, so thank you, Principal Goddett. You made those changes. As to the Deer Hill Handbook, is there a motion, motion, is there a motion to approve the changes to the Deer Hill Handbook as presented by Principal Sullivan tonight? Been made by Ms. Leskey, there's a second? Seconded by Ms. Hannah, all in favor? Aye. Opposed. Sentience. That motion carries unanimously as well. Sullivan, with those changes. As to the Cohasset Middle School, is there a motion to approve the changes as presented here tonight by Principal Mills? Motion's been made by Mr. Dial, seconded by Mr. Evans, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Sentience. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mills, please approve those changes. And finally, is there a motion to approve the changes to the Cohasset High School Handbook as presented tonight by Principal Scott? It made by Ms. Leskey, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hannah, all in favor? Aye. Opposed. Sentience. Motion carries unanimously. Principal Scott, please approve those changes. Thank you all very much for your presentation and for the work that went into those changes. Principal Goddett and Principal Sullivan, could you please stay up front while we move into the elementary school improvement plans? Turn the meeting over to the two of you. You can take in whatever you'd like.
Tell me who's going first, I can put your plan.
I'll go first, Travis.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me keep my emotional support. In the absence of.
Amazing line.
Now, now what I am. First, thank you for welcoming me to Cohasset. It's been a wonderful year. I feel like I'm involved in a community that really, for the lack of saying, of just, really does put students first. And I'm in a building where they cherish children and that makes a big difference for our day today.
Well, Principal Goddett, congratulations on finishing your first year.
Not yet. We don't, we don't say stuff like that out loud yet.
Oh, we don't?
Yeah, we don't. Because nine words.
Maybe that's a California thing.
It's a neat thing. I don't like the jinxes. I do have updated data for the accompanying documents that were sent.
We just finished the benchmark.
Yeah, we just finished our iReady, with the exception of three students, I think, for iReady maps. We finished our iReady and our Devils data. And I have to tell you, I'm actually excited because when I first populated the two boxes, I was a little bit nervous. And then I remembered that the smallest children blossom in the spring. And my goodness, the data really represents that. So I just want to make sure that you had that in front of you as well as we think about the wonderful year we had. So some of our highlights that I'd like to bring forward, I shared some photos of our year. One of the highlights was really having that student, student, family and community engagement. We worked hard to provide events that were in the evening, but also during the day that families could be involved in. Some of the ones pictured there are our curriculum nights. We had a family picnic before school started. That's bottom left there. One of the things that I thought was fantastic and unprovoked by me was Mrs. Dimony presented at Mosaic, her second graders' research projects on countries, which was really an awesome part of that evening. We have many community partnerships. We work with Deer Hill. We work with Cohasset, Irkin Dogs. Thanks to Alex. Alex kind of brought that on for us and we piloted a program to work with them. We have, we had several assemblies and one of those was the zoo came around. And this year, the first year in a couple of years, we had field trips. So it sounds like they hadn't been happening since COVID. So we had first graders go into Holly Hill. We had kindergartners did an in-house field trip. They brought in the barnyard babies and Leslie and Sarah got to enjoy that. Yeah, it was, it was really wonderful. And so if we can move to the next celebration. One of the other things that I'd like to highlight, just as part of getting to know a building, really focusing on the professional development and the team building are important pieces. So you see pictures of team building things like on the bottom left, not a cup. We did one, it's like the secret staff spirit day, they brought their beverage in anything but a cup. So things like that, things like connectors, which Sarah kind of introduces our meetings with connectors as well. So I brought that into every meeting that we had at school and really just celebrating one another. But also the PD piece, that is another chance for teachers to really appreciate one another's, one another as professionals. And so we have lots of opportunities for that with TLA, but also in-house with our own reading specialists. And I also, coming from the outside, was very impressed by the social, emotional and wellness piece at Osgood. The counseling is remarkable, but understanding that that's in response to a lot of things that happen at school. There are things in place that help children not get to the point of meeting counseling. And those things are zones of regulation and work and language around that. Those things are morning meetings. There's a picture next to the zones picture of students doing a morning meeting. We also have had lots of activities in terms of just getting, bringing the joy to school. One of, I know Craig's favorite was the election day. That's the top left. We also introduced an extra recess and that was kind of in response to kids being in a special for a little bit longer than really was developmentally appropriate. And so we added an extra recess with a twist. So when first and second grade teachers were in CPT, the kids were, are out on the yard with very little to keep them busy intentionally. So the idea of what would you do if your parents said, go outside and play and all you had was a box? So you see some pictures of boxes. So that's been a really fun addition as well and a nice way to get kids back outside. So we had four goals this year and understanding too, this is a plan that was inherited. So the description of the goals looks a little bit broad. So this first one was a student learning goal. We had, as I mentioned, professional development in-house, but also in that flexible group professional development was an in-house offering and it was based on, on teachers' team professional goal. So we had some teachers who had that small group work with our specialists and some teachers who did math fluency work with our math specialists. We also kind of honed in a little bit on our MTI. kind of honed in a little bit on our M T S S training and refined the structures that we use for that, trying to be intentional about six to nine week cycles, um, where we're monitoring kids' progress. Um, you'll see that that's still something we need to, to continue to do and to refine and, um, and make sure that we're building in that piece with parent communication. Um, but also really focusing in on that tiered instruction, not just tier three when kids get there, but what does tier one look like? And, and what are we doing to meet the needs of kids within a classroom before it gets to that point? Our second goal was around social, emotional wear, uh, wellness, and I mentioned zones of regulation. And that language is used everywhere in the building, and there's visuals everywhere. I tell you, I have adults using that language, and it's, it's great, I mean, for themselves. I feel I'm a little bit in the, in the yellow right now, because I'm a little nervous. So, um, we also have protected time for morning meetings, and that was something that was really important as we were looking at the master schedule, and we'll continue to do that next year, um, just for that community building piece within a classroom. And it ties to, um, responsive classroom. Um, we do need to get more training for, for staff members in responsive classroom. And we would like to have, in the past, you know, there, there's been three curriculum nights, a math, a language arts, and a cell night, and we would like to bring that back. And Mr. Vincent and I were talking about doing it at the beginning of the year, so that we can, parents and families can have those tools at the very beginning. The commu, uh, the family and community engagement piece, again, very important for someone in their first year to really hone in on this piece. So, um, getting to know families and getting to know, um, the community around me, but also, um, doing that as a building and reaching out. It was, it was really cool to see the pieces of the puzzle when we did start to talk about field trips, like, oh yeah, we have this resource, we have this resource, being that small town, then we can do that. Um, one of the things that I, um, started to do this year was a weekly bulletin. Every Sunday, you get the Sunday smart four, with the exception of last Sunday. That was, that came on Monday. And that, that's my way of just keeping, um, parents informed and, and it kind of lives, it's the tool we all use. Um, for our newsletters, it's similar to what you'll see from Sarah's. Um, but we had a lot of things going on in school and out of school, because as a building, we also believe that that joy is a really big piece of learning. Um, and then, and, and did I mention field trips? I might have mentioned field trips, yeah. Um, one of the things we would like to do is systematize the work that we do to partner with our, um, our partner, our partner schools. And that, what we have right now is kind of kids reach out to us and we try to partner them up. So we would really, kind of, the four of us have talked about systematizing that as well. And then it's going to be ongoing to be seeking out partnerships in the community. We do a lot of work with kindergarten transition. It starts from, um, this year, for example, we, in May, we had, um, families come in for screeners for kiddos, so we got to a touch point with everybody there. Um, we will do a, another family picnic over the summer. Um, we also have the first day of school when other grade levels are teaching, kindergartners are going in for their meet and greet, um, which is fantastic, they get to go into their classroom, they meet their teacher. Um, and then that night, um, last year, and I will do this again this year, I did a Zoom call to help tuck them in and read them a book that they all received that day. Um, so they could read it with me. And then, um, the other piece of that puzzle was any families that had concerns over the summer. We did offer a lot of tours and those kinds of things. We had a lot of this year coming in anxieties with first and second graders, but the linchpin for the kindergartners was rec. Having rec in our building, we had, I think, eighty-eight percent of our kindergartners participated in the rec program. I had one kindergartner crying, walking into school, and she was walking into school, she was coming. It was the first and second graders, we weren't feeling off parents, so it, and she's done remarkable. Um, so that, that piece of puzzle, I think, is really working functionally. Um, one of the things that we'd like to do is work a little bit more with preschool and how we get kids transitioned into our preschool and keep those families part of our, our bigger picture. And as you know, next year, our strategic plan will kind of guide us in thinking about our school improvement plan. Um, but then also funnel down into teacher, principal and teacher goals. Some of the questions that I'll be grappling with, um, staff members about and, and, um, school council about is, um, how do we look at each grade level, every teacher in a grade level owning the whole grade level? So instead of just, this is my class, how can we think of it as this is, these, these are all our kids, all these, and starting at second grade, you know? And then, then it filters down to the whole school, but really, all kids are our kids in that perspective. Um, how do we fit in play? Um, I know you'll probably hear a little bit about an added recess, my colleague here too. But, um, but how does that fit in in the classroom? We understand that that's how children, young children learn, so how does that look in a classroom? Um, and how are we mining our own expertise so that we can leverage all of the strengths that our, our staff members are bringing to the, to the table? Um, how do we capture student voice? There was a picture earlier of Sarah capturing some student voice when she came to, um, talk to students about all the things that they love or would improve about Osgood, and how do we do that in a more deliberate way? Um, and then how do we just make sure that we're using our time and resources super efficiently, um, to ensure students are getting what they need at any level? I am available here for any questions if you should have any.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh, any comments or questions for Principal Godette, let's go around, put it in order, Dial.
Nothing, I guess, one generic question, our first thing to the presentation. I think this may, I'm going to come to the, I think this is our thing, I've been here, and I thought that was excellent.
Thank you.
So thank you, looking forward to, um, to how you play in the school. I guess as a, as a, as a new joiner, I guess, you know, you started with some initial reactions, but, um, more on the kind of improvement side of the things that you bring with you, some experiences that you have that you might think that we should also think about doing here that we can be doing better.
As a system or just at Osgood?
Either one, you can take that with whatever.
We've actually been talking a lot about, um, you know, I'm, I'm from California, so I'm like way on the other side, so there are, I know. Uh, so there are things that, that, um, you know, we might have done differently, but one of the things that we've been talking about is, is teacher evaluation and kind of the systems around that. So I'm participating in that group, um, with the lens of, of having just gone through revamping an entire district system of, of teacher evaluation. Um, so that's a piece of the puzzle. Um, I also really feel strongly that our preschool really needs to be more a part of our overall school, and they need to be included. Um, I, I have gotten feedback that they've been included more, but more is needed. And I think, um, that's going to be a piece of the puzzle, too.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Revitz, you're looking that way, and you said my name. Really, it's just. You two are. I have two at Osgood right now, and it was a great year, so, um, thanks for everything you do for all the teachers as well, and, and, you know, universally great, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Revitz, Ms. Hannah.
No questions or anything, um, I think you actually answered what I was thinking, you knew the structure, it was just coming here, new perspective.
Miss Lesky.
Congratulations.
That was a wonderful presentation, and I think you got it once a year. Um, and we're so happy to have you as part of the district, and I can't tell you how much I, my heart sings, and it brings me joy to think about educators focusing on play, focusing on D H connections. Um, I think that they not only benefit our littles to have older kids to look up to, but I think it really benefits our olders. Um, and I, I know, I call them olders, they're eighteen and they're almost adults now, but our olders to, to be role models and to have, um, to sort of have that feeling of, of caring for others in our community. I think it just, it overall deepens, um, everyone's experience, um, in such a nice small town, um, to do those things and to do them within the school community, it's just, um, a gift to everyone who lives here. And play, let's get outside, let's, let's cut up those boxes, let's be creative, so.
I actually went to, um, I looked into Playful Learning Institute, it's, um, an initiative, um, under Desi that is, that introduces play in a very structured way. I had folks on board. I didn't think I had the bandwidth to lead it well the first time around, so I ended up not applying for the grant, but we're going to be doing that this year, yes.
Hey, Miss Lesky, thank you, Principal Godette, uh, love the additional recess considerations that we're doing here. I think that's been one of some of the things that we saw in this generation do. So. I don't think I see any questions for you online, nothing in the audience, so move over to your, um, emotional support principal.
Roles are switched now. All right. So looking at some highlights for our school year. Um, we've just really focused a lot on collaboration. One of our goals was around the idea of social studies and science, and what kind of opportunities are we offering our students? Um, some highlights of that were examples in third grade where, um, the grade levels, um, uh, designed three science innovator days, and on those days, they, they buddied up. Um, some days they were across all six classrooms, some days they had kind of two tracks of three classrooms, and they created hands-on, um, science activities around magnets, engineering, and climate and weather were the three topics. And so students got to experience other classrooms. Leslie and Sarah were there on the last day, and we had like a rainforest in one of our classrooms, and, um, Mrs. Clark, thankfully, it was a cooler day, was in a parka, and you know, and so it was just a very experiential and hands-on approach to science. Social studies was another area where we wanted to build some capacity. We definitely have some work to do with more like the scope and sequence on daily, but again, looking for making it come alive. Uh, we had, oh, I want to go back to science for a second. Uh, we also partnered with C S C R in science, so fifth grade. Fast, I, I have a, a display in my building of all of our community partnerships that were on our C T-shirt this year. And at the beginning of the year, as I'm putting up photos, the one, the only one that I wasn't able to attach our school to was C S C R. And I thought, oh my gosh, my, my own child went through C S C R, like this is a huge gap. So I called Jack Buckley and we got on it, and fifth grade is in the process right now of doing the most amazing field trip where they are down there, they're with the college level interns, they're rotating, they've got waiters on, they're in the water, they're holding things, or doing all kinds of things like that. So those are the kinds of science and social studies opportunities, um, we want to bring. We partnered with Bridgewater State this year in fourth grade, where they brought a, um, a new thing was a ginormous globe that the students was like inflatable, they could actually get inside and see all the regions and things like that, and they got lectures from that. That was part of a P S O grant. Um, and then also, again, in third grade, a conversation that started over the summer with the Cohasset Historical Society really blossomed. Um, I had a volunteer third grade liaison, Kelly Frazier, and she met multiple times throughout the year with the Historical Society. Shout out to Katie Holden and other members of that society. And last week, they did a hop-on, hop-off bus tour of Cohasset, and they went to multiple sites. They went to the Beechwood Meeting House, they went to the Wilson House, they went to the Maritime Museum, they went to the Cohasset Historical Society, and then they had a picnic lunch on the common. And the number of volunteers from the Cohasset community that showed up for these kids and talked to them and shared their passion for our local history. We've been outsourcing it for the last couple of years to Marshfield, um, and, uh, which was lovely. And Marshfield appreciated that we paid because their own schools go for free, and so we were like a low cash cow for them. Uh, but it was so nice to bring it in-house and, and just, and, um, have those opportunities for our students. So many of them, you know, walk to Seabird and never know they're walking by the Maritime Museum. So, uh, that was really exciting. Uh, another highlight of our year was really looking for opportunities in a very systematic way for, uh, families to have direct input into topics of high interest. So we had, um, donuts and discussions multiple times throughout the year. We did one topic on the anxious generation and, um, kind of an extension of the, the whole group activity and where we talked about wait until eighth, and we did some, you know, some conversations around our digital practices and digital citizenship. We had one where Sarah came and talked about our building, um, proposals, because it's our kids that are going to hopefully benefit from that. And then we also had a topic on homework, um, which is also a part of our, um, school improvement plan. Oh, wait, oh, sorry, let me just see that last one, make sure I hit that. Uh, yeah, so there's the technology piece as well. And so again, we were able to be brought on board with another P S O initiative with the middle school, where we had, um, Dr. Elizabeth.
Englander.
Englander, who came, and, and so we were able to address it that way as well. Um, so again, our first goal this year was the opportunities for social studies and science. I think I've really touched on a lot of the highlights, um, this year, and then this kind of just goes into a little more detail about, uh, those. I think I pretty much touched on, we also had a really established a nice partnership with the fire department this year. They have a new educator coordinator who is like, like very eager, and, um, we met and we talked, and he came multiple times and, and met with all, first he met with third grade, or the, the fireman came, and then he has recently been going, he was just there yesterday, um, been having lessons with all the grade levels around fire safety and responsibility and things like that. So that was a, a new partnership for us as well. Uh, so it's pretty exciting. It's someone new in that position. Yes, it is someone new in that position, John. Viggery. Yes, he's, he's super excited about it. Yeah, it's a great program. It's really, he's really done some lovely, lovely things. So there, here's just some highlights, I, at the time I needed to submit this, we hadn't done our hop-on, hop-off tour, but if you look at my latest newsletter, you'll see some great pictures of that, C S C R pictures, that started this week, so those pictures will be in this Friday. But you can see the globe, um, you can see on the left, that's the third grade, uh, Science Innovator Day, that was the, um, engineering one, I believe, and then on the right, um, that's a science in-house with the North and South River Watershed Association. Again, hands-on, also leverages our parent volunteers. Uh, our second goal was around homework practices and the development of a cohesive expectation. So we were a little bit ahead of our time on this one, and so we started this process, and then soon it became clear that this was going to be a bucket in our upcoming strategic plan. So we did host a, uh, parent informate, you know, one of our donuts and discussions around this. It was actually, we used a somewhat, we used a modified dialogue protocol, and we had some very clear questions. It was a great turnout, and I've got those charts on my wall. Um, but in terms of moving forward with my student advisory council and working with staff, and came, reached an agreement with Leslie and Sarah that we were going to hit pause and reinvest in that as part of our strategic plan. And so this is one that in my, my formal report, you see more red than green, but that was intentional because I wanted to make sure we were, we were timing it right, jumping into the jumper at the right time. And so that's, there's some of the, the work that we did, and this is kind, I had taken pictures that day, but it was just like adults sitting around tables, so I deleted them from my phone, and then when I was like, oh, make your presentation and add some photos, I was like, oh! They were gone from my deleted folder, so you've got a picture of the charm. I missed my moment. Um, and then, uh, this goal was, again, written very specifically around Epstein's model of parent involvement, and then thinking about three new engagement opportunities. Um, Epstein's model wasn't something that we focused on as a leadership team this year, it had been introduced in the past. So I would say that I wasn't explicit in naming it in, in the work we did, but it was, it, it drove that kind of work. And so again, those, those parent caregiver forums, I was really pleased, I was really looking for a way to bring more people in to our P S O meetings, and I found that if you call it a P S O meeting, even if you give a topic of discussion, it didn't have that same draw. But by calling it a forum, the donuts, I don't know if the donuts really helped, I think I ate them. But then also really making it focused in terms of what we're talking about in a very different way, and really just being targeted about what we were talking about and making sure we're hitting our topics made a, a big difference. And then again, originally, this goal was written to include, um, the Norfolk D A, and then that partnership wasn't able to evolve the way we had envisioned at the end of last year. Um, and so that's when we were so lucky that Jen Dial and, uh, the middle school were like, hey, we're doing this thing, and we'd love to include you. And I was like, yes, this aligns with my school improvement plan, and we would love to be included. And I was so pleased that night to see so many Deer Hill families that came. And so that, that checked our box just in a different way than we envisioned. And then another piece that we did, um, as part of our original goal, we, uh, we had envisioned a, a student component, and we were able to address that through our instructional technology specialist, Cassie O'Brien, who, um, developed a, a week-long kind of, um, deep dive into some of these topics around digital safety and digital citizenship, and everyone was really on board. And then in our morning, we have a daily morning bulletin to. And then in our morning, we have a daily morning bulletin to staff. She kept it updated throughout the whole year and so it was always available. And that was at staff, that was based on teacher feedback. They really enjoyed the week and they asked if we could keep it going. So it was something that we were able to offer students throughout the year and have those conversations. And then again, always looking for ways that we can bring parents in. And an example of that is again, that North and South River Watershed that's run, it's like led by that organization, but then run by parents. And then also our community expert days that we have throughout the building. And then we were able to, an area of my school improvement plan that I, I do feel like I want to keep at the forefront is how do we specifically engage our population of families from Boston? And the initial work that we did this year, I have been fortunate the last couple of years to send staff to the Metco conference. And I think that helps them think of ways to engage their families and build those connections. And so I think that's a way to do that. And so here's some examples on, see, look, donuts. And so here's some examples of some of those things. On the right, that was a parent who's a beekeeper. Actually, a couple of different beekeepers in our, in our school buckets. So this, we've had the Dordys in the past, this was another family who came and did a full lesson with third grade. We have our Lunar New Year celebration with the Sullivan family. And then that's an example of one of our forums with the donuts and discussion, I believe that was the digital one. Tell them I stole your crap. It's all collaboration. It is collaboration, a hundred percent. I was really proud that I figured out how to make an arrow. So our Deer Hill School Improvement Plan. And so looking ahead into next year, some areas, again, there's that homework again. Now we're in alignment better with the district. And then we're really excited at Deer Hill about kind of an aha moment for our building this year was that MTSS isn't a meeting that you go to once a week and you refer students to. It is a way of thinking about students in everything you do. And one way we do that is how we, and this kind of goes along with what Principal Godet said, about how they are all our students and how we look at data in a way that's very collective. And then how we plan teaching around that. And so when we talked about this at our most recent staff meeting, I used an analogy from Friends. When Phoebe Bouffay talks about someone being their lobster. And somehow that language has really stuck in my building and it is really funny. It's coming up in a lot of meetings where people are talking about lobsters. And so if you hear that in our building, it's them thinking about who are the people that are going to help them move the needle with students. And so that's really exciting. And I want next year to capture that in my school improvement plan in a very sandbox way. I don't want it to be scripted. Several years ago, we did have a what I need time, we had a committee. We told the entire building, this is what it's going to look like and this is the data we're going to use. And this is how we're going to all move and this is what we're going to do. What I'm looking to do for the next year is to give teachers opportunities to think about how they want to work with each other. How do they want to group students? How do you swing open the door between you and the person next to you? We actually are doing the Great Classroom Migration over the next couple of weeks. I have several teachers moving classrooms. And a lot of times that's very angsty to tell a teacher they have to move rooms. But every teacher I went to where I said, hey, I'd like to propose you moving rooms, their face kind of went down. And then I said, and here's why, and they went, oh! Because I'm like, I want to get you next to somebody that I know you're going to work well with. I want to make sure that we are wrapping around our new teachers to the building and making sure they have a teacher on either side of them from their grade level. Making those kinds of decisions, everyone was on board and excited. And so it really comes at all levels of planning, you know, from where you are teaching, to what you are teaching, to who you're teaching with, what students you're addressing. So you sound really excited about that goal. I'm really excited about what flexible teaming looks like. Other things we want to look at are opportunities possibly for our KBL work and really closely aligned with our new strategic plan. And then this was an area that was in my professional goal this year that I didn't get to develop as much as I wanted to. And how we are looking at student wellness and positive behavior and what are some things we're, we're doing around that. How, and that goes within our school day and also kind of those extra events and how we establish norms for behavior and make them consistent throughout. And I have a bonus slide because he didn't, wasn't in my school improvement plan in any way. But I just think it's really important when I think about this year to think about the impact of, and also out of gratitude to Superintendent Shannon and school committee and Cohasset Working Dog Foundation, just so many people. The staff who welcomed Hugo, that it just is something that really brought a lot to our building this year in terms of joy and safety and community. And it helped me connect with students in a whole different way. It helped my husband connect with students because when he's walking down the street and people recognize him with Hugo, he's making all kinds of new friends. So our dog walker is making new friends. But I just think that Hugo, I just couldn't not talk about what he has done for our building. And also by extension into Osford, he's now made a few visits to Osford. And I received a lovely, lovely email from an Osford parent this week who just said, hey, I just want to reach out and, and tell you why this was so important for our family that Hugo came into my child's classroom today.
Thank you, Principal Sullivan. Any questions or comments for Principal Sullivan relative to the school improvement plans, Dial?
Thank you for that. That's an excellent presentation. Lots of good stuff going on at Deer Hill School, which is fantastic. I do want to seize on a couple of things that are, which to encourage further. But I love, and I think this committee loves as a whole, the efforts that the schools and the district take to bring in other alternative learning, experiential learning. And then through your plan, you, there were a couple of instances that I picked up on where you were looking for ways to bring things in. So the beekeeper, the collective work. So I think that's great. I'd love to encourage you to continue that. I want to express my appreciation for that. And then it is another theme that we've been talking for years about is the tapping into our community resource. A lot of, a lot of parents with a lot of expertise love the beekeeper, example. And so that's something to think about how we can rekindle or put together, you know, a list of parents and their skills who can be willing to do things. And I'll just go ahead, if you want anyone to ever come into our Deer Hill to talk about tax support limit for mutual funds.
So we have done, this was the last.
I could also tell our six and seventeen of the nineteen.
Loan officers come in and the kids are fascinated.
I would be fascinated by that.
It's really interesting.
An inflatable version of the code, you can actually step inside.
I do want to make a forty X pop-up book, but that's a good story.
We, for the last, not this school year, but the prior two school years, we did a school-wide community expert day. And we had, again, that's when we had the mortgage officer come in and, and we had all different kinds of things across the building. And the PSO, sometimes when you do something for a couple of years, you exhaust your community partners and they need a break. And so we were kind of like, okay, let's hit pause and how do we start? One of the things we talked about with the PSOs, how do we cycle things? So maybe over a three-year experience at Deer Hill, you have one year where you have Community Expert Day. And then you have one year, you know, and so we were kind of looking at some of those opportunities to keep things fresh and keep our, our partnerships engaged and things for sure. But yes, you are on deck for law, you guys could be a team.
And also thank you for leaning into our partnerships with our community organizations like PSO. I think that's, if that's an easy resource.
Absolutely. We have amazing PSO. Last night I had my second grade informational night for entering families. It was the first time it had been in person since before COVID. And we had an amazing turnout. We actually had a really fun time and we talked for so long with the tour we were going to do became optional. But everyone stayed, we caught the rusty skippers off guard, they were rehearsing. And then all forty of us were in the cafeteria watching them. But, oh, I felt like on the tour and within my presentation, every other thing I talked about was, and this was due to the PSO. Or here are our bikes, thank you CEF. And here is our, we're sitting in our innovation commons. And it was just such a, it really, it is just, when you look around Deer Hill at the courtyard and all the things, it is because of our CEF and our PSO that we are the building that we are. And so it really is, it's very easy to sing the praises of those organizations.
Thank you for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Evans?
Here we go. Thank you very much. My wife attended the preview night you had last night.
Okay.
So enormously helpful. I know my children are still alive, but the days we had the CSCR, the Southern High Hill, those are the days that they always.
Right.
So we've got such great people in this town. So I love that you take advantage of it. And of course, you know, anything you can do to fit in those experiences.
Twenty-sevens, Tam?
I guess my only question is, we filled out a form about the parent, that parent, what parents do, whatever happened to that?
It just needs to, like, it's going to be something we're going to have to roll out several times before it's like, we're looking to get like, at least like a hundred people to like, you know. So right now, I, we're not, I think we're around like twenty, right?
Seven.
Oh, wow. There you go. So we're thirty-seven.
I will say that, so that's been the goal of the school committee and now it's also an action item in the new strategic plan. And so the district is going to partner more closely with the school committee to make this happen. I actually wrote up all the actions, haven't shared them with anyone yet, but wrote up all the action steps to really create a more robust database. Have some ideas.
I mean, you're right. I mean, just like anything here, like we just have people on like, like pounding, you know, people's heads. And eventually like people will.
We'll get to the hundred mark.
We'll get to the hundred mark.
Prize for that person, if you're the hundredth signup, what do you get?
You get to get the hundredth verse signup.
Visit with Hugo.
And that was my next thing is Hugo has been a future.
Duke and Hugo are, and I know you have a new puppy too, but.
Well, thank you for that. That's a huge addition. No, but it's been great. So thank you, God. I know everything you guys have been.
Thank you.
Ms. Luskey?
I will briefly echo my appreciation for your, not only your report, but your real focus on collaborations, particularly in town. I think that sort of understanding the gem in which our kids live is absolutely wonderful. And again, creates that sort of bigger sense of community. You have kids, classrooms, schools, district, but then we also live in this wonderful town. So I think that that's wonderful. I also really appreciate your thoughts around flexible teaming. Hadn't been a teacher myself, it is hard to move out of your beloved classroom. But knowing that there's some intentionality around who your neighbors are and why they're your teaching neighbors can make a profession that can sometimes feel kind of lonely a little less so. So thank you for that. Cause I think it's really important that we care for our faculty and the district, all that we do. And Hugo. I've run down the street. Having, I am Hugo's grandmother and I actually meet children in the woods and other places because they'll come up to Pat Dolly, who's Hugo's mom. And I'll say, do you go to Deer Hill? And the parents at first look at me like I'm a little crazy. I was like, because this is Hugo's mama. And they're all like absolutely enthralled. So thank you for giving me that little teeny bit of stardom that allows me to connect with others in the strangest places. Anyone who wants to pet a dog, I haven't had to.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Luskey, and thank you, Principal Scott and Sullivan for your passion and your infectious enthusiasm. We have to approve the school approval plans, so, or it is asking for a vote.
They're not, yeah, I mean, we're just a review. You actually don't have a school improvement plan in front of you because we're going to do them in the fall because we just.
All right. Well, we marked for a vote, so, you know, didn't want to mismanage everyone's expectations. Well, then, then we will, thank you and bid you adieu. There's a lot of meat left on this bone for us tonight. So thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you so much.
Very odd analogy.
We'll, we'll, we'll. We'll, we'll move right into the next and final item in the invited guest section, which is our review of our athletics department that was just completed. So we'll welcome Mr. Mark Otto-Vianelli. Did I get that right? All right. And Principal Scott, I don't know, our athletic directors here, Mr. Tony, do you want to come up, dude? You're welcome to, or you're welcome to stay right where you are?
All right. So I just want to welcome Mr. Mark Otto-Vianelli. Close, no?
No, you got it right.
Okay. I'm going to go with Mark. So Mark's a longtime and now retired athletic director who helped write the standards for athletics for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is sort of known as NEAS, which is who also does the review of all schools and, and small colleges and things like that. Interestingly, last summer, Mr. Scott actually called me and said, I'm at this conference and there are, NEAS is here and they're presenting on the new standards. And they're looking for schools who are willing to be a part of a pilot program where NEAS would come in and do the whole review. Can I sign us up? And I think I did it like a couple of weeks. So I said, sure. We unfortunately weren't chosen and had plans to be a part of the actual process this coming school year. But when concerns were raised about the athletic program, we decided to go directly to the source. And where Mark was so intimately involved in writing the standards, we reached out to him to see if he could come in now to do the review. And so since early spring, he has been in the district, he's been meeting with stakeholders. He'll talk about who he's met with and he's done a thorough review of the athletics department. And so tonight he is here to share his findings. I'm going to turn it over to him. I'm going to share slides. He's going to tell me when to turn the slide.
You can turn that one.
Okay.
Well, first of all, thank you very much. Really appreciate your time and all your efforts here. One clarification, I did not, was not involved in writing of the standards, but in the development and how it went through. How it worked out was Taunton High School last year was the original guinea pig, I guess, for a better word, not for a better word, of going through a review. So I was involved in that process with NEAS, superintendent school committee in our community. And then we were able to go on the road during the summer, superintendent's conferences, principals' conferences. And we were, I was on a part of that period. So I've been involved in the process. Longtime athletic director, twenty-four years, two years at Coyle and Cassidy High School in Taunton. And then the twenty, the final twenty-two years at Taunton. Had a tremendous run. It's a wonderful place.
Sorry, graduating.
It's, and we were able to do a lot of good things. And I found out over that time period, the difference between me as an athletic director and as an administrator. Okay, when I first started out and when I ended, I was two different people. I grow into the position, positions, times had changed. I tell a quick story all the time. I ended up coaching eighth grade basketball in the eighth grade at the high school. Wasn't able to find a eighth grade basketball coach. I coached college basketball for fourteen years. I took the job myself. My mother, who's now eighty-six, would come to the games. She said, Mark, you're very political. Said, Mom, sometimes the third most political, I'm in the top three most political people in the city of Taunton. She goes, no, no, I go, the mayor, the superintendent, myself. I said, in some days, I'm number one. Because what happens, it's very important what happens between eight and two every day. And from all the, what I've heard today and all the wonderful things that are going on in this district, it's amazing, but there's also from two to eight is where all the passion lies. And you have a lot of wonderful things going on between two and eight also. So you should be very, very proud of that. But if you go, go back a little bit, please. So NEAS, you have to go through every tenure and accreditation. They're going to start, NEAS is going to put athletics into that process that is coming. That's why they wanted to start this pilot program. Okay, they're going to be adding that in the future. Got a call from Ryan, ask me if I would be able to come and be part of this. More than one to is outstanding. What we want to do is evaluate the athletic department against best practices. And we also wanted to evaluate the validity of complaints pertaining to aspects of the athletic department. Next slide, please. So the methodology that NEAS uses is stakeholder engagement. You should be so proud of what's happening in this community. Your student athletes, I'm telling you, totally impressive. Totally impressive group. So they are proud and they are driven. They are great kids. The coaching staff is dedicated and you have some high-quality members. Okay, and your parents are involved and committed. That doesn't happen everywhere. It's sometimes difficult in certain places. You have all three of those components. It's sometimes difficult in certain places, you have all three of those components. School administration, school committee, I had top launch here, I got to talk to a number of different people on my own, different times, different things. We went through this whole review, met with the seniors and juniors, juniors in a group auditorium by myself, and I met with the freshmen and sophomores, and I met with parents in the community. I got emails, I called parents, I had Zoom meetings with parents, there were about twenty individual parents. What I tried to do, and I think I was successful for the most part, except for the last two emails, I tried to answer every email within twenty-four hours. The last two, I think, was forty-eight, it was over the weekend, or I must have, I just missed it. Um, met with the coaching staff, met individually with them, met together with them. Anybody that wanted to talk, anybody that wanted to come back and talk again, we were able to do that, met with school committee. So it was a wide-open process, they got a lot of good information, and when you have people that are passionate, driven, and involved, there are gonna be conflicts because that passion leads to what is best for the kids. And that's what everybody is involved in, is what is best for the student athletes in class, so you should be very proud. You got an impressive number of athletic offerings for such a small school, you have four hundred and six students, and you have eighty-six percent, three hundred and forty-nine participating. That's amazing. That is absolutely amazing, you have over thirty programs, excuse me, thirty, yeah, thirty programs with twenty different sports. The opportunities that you provide here in this community for your student athletes are fantastic. There are high expectations. Not only athletically, with sportsmanship, but with also academics. Very, very important that they all come in and in a positive and constructive way, that we can do what's best for our student athletes. Went on onsite observations, facility reviews, and went through a large number of the different documents that was provided by Principal Scott and Superintendent. Other things that we've already went over, highly competitive, you had, they were, all of your teams, except for one, this year made the state tournament. That one team is a new program that made the state tournament last year and won the league, that was Molly. So they had success in their first year, the second year was a little down, they were working hard to get it back up. So, over the two-year pro- year process, all of your teams have made the state tournament, that's unheard of, unheard of. State championships in boys soccer and girls lacrosse over the past year. Number-one seeds, your teams, I think every team in the spring is qualified for the tournament. The number is still playing, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, baseball was playing today, boys tennis, girls tennis. Trash, it's amazing, absolutely amazing. The requirements that were online, registration form, user fee, physical and impact testing, and sports information. Now, what I'd like to do in standards, I know everyone has a copy of this, we gave them that to a pick last week, correct? Instead of going through the beginning of it and all that, I would just like to read the, my observations and then go through the commendations and recommendations. That is the goal of this process with NEAS. It's not to come in and say, you should have done this, you should have done that, you should have hired this person, you should get rid of this person, this coach should do this, none of that, it's observations and looking at policies and procedures and where we can be helpful to move forward with what you're trying to do here. So the first one, standard one is program and guiding principles. Without question, Cohasset High School Athletic Program is a source of passion and pride, as evidenced by the comments expressed by all stakeholders. This passion and pride appear to be the foundational elements that motivates and drives the success of the athletic teams and performances of individual athletes. Recent and historical events of success have strengthened the stakeholder mindset. MIA state championships been secured by girls lacrosse and boys soccer, numerous teams and individuals have qualified and won championships within the South Shore League. The winning ways of Cohasset Athletics has led to the development of new and exciting programs. Remarkably, success has, has been achieved without clearly articulated or understood mission statement and belief system for the Cohasset High School Athletic Program. Stakeholders express differing ideas and/or opinions of what the mission and the expectations are for the program. This lack of clarity regarding the mission of the program has led to highly visible and divisive conflicts within and above the athletic department. Without a clear and well-defined mission statement, the stakeholders will fill this information void with the belief that decisions regarding the program are being made preciously and influenced by individuals or groups who may be acting in a self-serving manner. Moving forward, the establishment of a mission statement and expectations for the program will form the basis of all decision-making. This action step will potentially increase the likelihood of minimizing conflicts regarding the program and will ground the work of the adults in seeking what is in the best interest of the Cohasset student. Commendations. I'm gonna say this a lot, a lot of the commendations, you'll see a common theme throughout this. Pride, sense of belonging. There is a great sense of pride in this community and through your student athletes. Dedicated and coaching staff with an understanding of the importance of athletics and student development, and there is a strong parental and community involvement in the athletic department. That, those three things, those commendations, those three are consistent throughout what goes on here every day. You don't have that in other places. You're very, very fortunate, very fortunate. Recommendations. All those stakeholders have to be heard. So the recommendations, development of the athletic department mission and expectations with input from all stakeholders, including student athletes, coaches, school administration, school committee, parents, and community members. The missing, the mission statement should be aligned with the school's mission, vision, and core values. The mission and vision should be reviewed, revised, and reaffirmed on a cycle with the district's strategic plan using information from all stakeholders involved. Expectations should be reviewed, revised, and reaffirmed on an annual basis. Preseason meetings should be consistent in communicating each athletic season. Consistencies is needed because you have so many two and three-sport athletes. What happens in the fall might not necessarily happen in the winter or the spring. The kids are very smart, very intelligent, very passionate. They like how some coaches do things, and then when other coaches that they have later on in the year don't meet up to that standard, it's a difficult transition. Coaching staff, coaching staff involvement in the development of preseason meeting agendas will be beneficial in reinforcing the mission and expectations of the athletic department on a consistent basis. The mission and expectation should be published, communicated, regularly reviewed, and available to all stakeholders involved. Communication is a, is a key. Especially throughout, on all six standards. There's gotta be a better development of communication between all stakeholders. Does anybody have any questions on standard one? Do you want, should I do it individually, or should I just keep going?
I, I, I think, in the interest of time, maybe what we should do, um, uh, Vianelli, is maybe just for each standard, focus on the commendations and recommendations, more of a summary, it's more of a highlight, rather than going through the observations as well, because the report, because you, you,
I did it.
You created this comprehensive report that is published, and we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that everyone has that, but I feel like for the purpose of this presentation, that might be the best way to go.
No problem at all.
Because I feel like the commendations and recommendations kind of hit on the observations a little bit.
Right. The athletic program. Commendations. Student athletes' willingness for leadership, training, and mentoring opportunities. Especially your upperclassmen. You talked about tonight through this full meeting of the connections between the students, high school, middle school, elementary, preschool. Your kids want to do that, they're yearning for that, they want to work with the younger kids in their programs. That's outstanding. It's, it's mind-blowing to me how much they wanted to be part of it, but they want to learn more on how to do that. The Cohasset Coaching Staff, South Shore League, and the MIAA have developed and implemented team educationally-based programs, high number of multi-sport athletes, and the mil- building of a new training facility and athletic turf field and track facility. For a small school and a small community, you have some good facilities. Pretty good. Recommendation, create a school-wide educationally-based curriculum for athletes to address sportsmanship, health and wellness, time management, and leadership, leadership skill development. Provide a formalized leadership program for coaches, student athletes, and educational staff during the development process to ensure buy-in, consistency across all sports programs and relevance. School administration and parents and guardians and our caregivers should also be engaged. Investigate the feasibility of developing a strength and conditioning coach slash coordinator position to utilize the new training facility and provide connections and opportunities between sports teams, emphasizing positive act- attributes of multi-sport athletes. That's a very good point, because a lot of these, a lot of your student athletes are looking to go on and play at a higher level. Whether they will or not, that's all depends on the coaches at the higher levels. Okay, it's not us deciding, it's not the parents, it's not the kids, it's the people who are in those positions. But that transition between sports and to, in order to keep everybody involved, because that's, that's your lifeline, is your two or three-sport athletes. They're looking for that strength and conditioning piece to get to that next level, how do we do that and keep them involved? It's difficult, but it can be done. Establish and strengthen the cooperative relationship between the school's guidance department and the athletic department, assisting with college exploration and placement, along with any student athlete concerns. Your student athletes feel, there's an expectation in town, they feel the weight of what school they're gonna go to, what are they gonna do at that next level? If there's, if there's a little bit of pressure on them, we have to work with them. Make sure they can handle that and get to that next level where they need to go. And continue to celebrate team and individual student athlete accomplishments through formal and informal recognition experiences, which may be either in-person or strategically through social media posts. Program, standard three, program resources and equity. Commandations. The ability of the athletic programs to adjust to and to accommodate to the needs of all involved. The commitment of the athletic department staff, the passion and dedication of people in the individual booster clubs, supporting the teams and student athletes in various ways. Again, your parent involvement, especially in the booster club, is so important, and it's it's, it's constant throughout your program, which is fantastic. The collaboration between the athletic department, community recreation department, school facilities maintenance department, and off-site rental facilities in providing athletic facilities for Cohasset High School athletic use. There's a lot of moving pieces there. And the number ten, your youth programs are outstanding and beneficial to your high school programs. So everybody wants a piece of the field, so there's a lot of hard work in that. Recommendations. Review the roles, responsibilities, and mission of the Cohasset High School Athletic Booster Clubs. This includes what is not limited to the development of a booster club athletic program advisory board, discussing the positives and negatives of having individual sports program booster clubs versus one unified booster club and providing financial support for volunteer coaches. My first, my interview at Taunton High School, I was told they didn't, the individual booster clubs didn't want to be touched. I used that for twenty-two years, because I had come from Boyle, which had one unified. There's pros and cons for both, you have to decide what is best for your community, and what is best that is gonna serve your student athletes. Because that's, as adults, that's what we want to do. We want to provide our kids with opportunities. Develop a long-range plan, strategic plan in regards to purchasing, maintaining, and refurbishment of all athletic equipment. Investigate the feasibility of additional athletic, athletic department clerical, security, and game management support. Maintain open lines of communication with the community recreation department on the future rehabilitation or new construction of athletic facilities used by the Cohasset High School Athletic Programs, and proceed with a capital outline plan dependent upon the MSBA school construction request. That'll be important, once you know what happens there, where can you go athletic program? Standard four, program administration. Commandations. Pride in the behavior of student athletes, coaches, and spectators in sporting events. Student athlete's support for their classmates is apparent at athletic con- contests. There is an understanding of high expectations about behavior, professionalism, and respect for all stakeholders. You all should be proud of that. Not, not only your school administrations and your school committee, but your staff, your coaching staff, your teaching staff, your parents, your youth coaches, that's all big part, they learn from, right, right from the start, that's awesome. Recommendations. Follow recently developed procedures for all athletic coaching positions, head coaches, assistant coaches, and volunteers. Continue the developing onboarding process for all new coaches at all levels. Create and make available a student athlete and parent handbook. Create a coach's handbook, which includes components to address the expectations and support of volunteer coaches and assistants. Develop a process for the evaluation and professional development of coaches. Create a mechanism for stakeholder input from student athletes, parents, school committee, and the community into decisions impacting the athletic program. And develop a process to communicate information to all stakeholders on a consistent basis. Communication's the key. When I first started out, I didn't want to talk to anybody. But I, my last ten years, I talked to everybody. It's part of the deal. Standard five, program and player evaluation. Commandations. The number of multi-sport app, student athletes that you have, and the relationship between the coaching staff and the student athletes. Recommendations. Develop a program improvement plan that takes into consideration the high number of multi-sport athletes participating in Cohasset High School Athletics. Investigate the feasibility of developing a process to assess and provide feedback on the skill growth of all student athletes, and implement a consistent system of exit interviews with players and coaches. Talk into the kids when they leave, what was good, what was bad, what could be better. They're the ones that are gonna give you that feedback that you need to improve the program. Standard six, safety and well-being and inclusion. Commandations. The athletic program provides a safe environment for student athletes and adults. Pride in being a Cohasset High School student athlete is evident. Parent and community involvement is apparent and appreciated. That's a consistent theme throughout this community on all levels as I heard tonight. Recommendation. Communicate the MIAA and Massachusetts Department of Health Regulations to all stakeholders. Continue to evaluate the student athletes' parental concerns on an individual basis. Continue to review eighth-grade waivers, opportunities based upon sport, and continue to make athletic user fees accommodate, accommodations if needed. Final thoughts, you have a strong, successful educational program. Your student, again, your student athlete pride, they love playing there, they love their teammates. I went to a couple of games, you can see other kids coming from other teams, supporting their teammates and their classmates, it's outstanding. You have a dedicated and commo- uh, committed coaching staff and school administration. Your parent, your community passion and interest is. Your parent, your community passion and interest is off the charts. Your student well-being, you have an opportunity to build upon the success. There are a lot of good things going on here. Are there things that need improvement? Absolutely. I think with Superintendent Shannon's leadership, Principal Scott's leadership, Athletic Director Rotandi's leadership. To bring that all together, working with all the stakeholders and holders involved. You have something really, really good. Hopefully you can take some of the recommendations, tweak some of the things that are going on and make it better. But you should be very, very proud of what's going on in this community, because everybody is involved.
Thank you so much for that, uh, shot up the alley, uh, Principal Scott, you've been in the ad at this point?
No, I appreciate um all Mark's work. Uh, you know, I, I very much found the NOS process. I think it's a great way to get outside, non-biased feedback into what we're doing. To compare it to a much larger pool of what other schools are doing. Um, and to provide some, some feedback, restful proof, I think we constantly improve. Both in school and in athletics, athletics is a big one, we put it what we do, so. Yeah, I'm very appreciative of what is in the.
Thank you. I think perfect, so there's no such thing as perfect school research. Athletics department is one pass of that, so I mean, I don't think there's always opportunity for it. So. Uh, any questions or comments related to uh the. Um, Athletics Department review report as presented by Mr. Otavio and Ellie tonight. Let's go around in alphabetical order, Mr. Dial.
Um, Mr. Really, thank you very much for that, sounds like a very thorough process. Uh, it sounded like you moved with a couple dozen people, at least.
Uh, no worries.
Um, parents, students, um, faculty, staff. Um, couple of questions, uh, as, as you know, the genesis of this project uh came about because of some concerns raised about the athletic program. Um, and your recommendations, I think, are, are great. There's a few of these that are, that certainly right, um. Certainly resonate with me, uh, the mission statement and belief system. I, I think you're, you're, you're spot on that. A lack of that can create um distrust or at least concerns. Uh, so that seems to be a, a looking for almost, and also a booster club advisory board. I had not even thought about that. Uh, and the amount we know about kind of what's going on with booster clubs at the committee level, I think, um, could be better. So I think that those are areas that I think we can immediately start to, start to move. Uh, you also um went through your presentation and, and. So it said we would, and I picked up on the theme of parental involvement and parental appreciation. And the relationship between the athletic programs and, and students and parents uh is, is absolutely paramount, uh, as well as the broader community. And one of the concerns that have been raised that, that bothered me was that there were some elements of that relationship between the athletic program and either parents or athletic program and the broader community that were not good, that uh were, were, people were distrustful, people were, um, were, you know. Worried about the athletic program to, to um, with respect to their, their, did you pick up on any of that, and if there were any elements of that, are there any things that we could be doing better to facilitate greater levels of trust and among the broader?
So there was some of that, and. The people who brought that up were very passionate. And. Very vocal. They, I don't think they're distrustful. I think they wanna be communicated to more. In a more open style. So I think it's more of a lack of information in that particular situation. But I think there were a lot of, there were a couple of individual situations where that happened. I think if it was a better discussion, I think that would be helpful.
Uh, and then another, another leg of the journey is um. Safety issues, following policies and the like. Uh, in your review, did you see, I mean, certainly there's always, as Chairman of the Club, there's always room for improvement. But did you see any uh anything that we should take immediate action on or focus on immediately from a safety perspective, uh, with respect to that?
So I know, especially with a lot of community involvement, especially in youth sports, there's a difference between the MIAA rules and the Mass Department of Health Regulations and organizations like Safe Sport. All well-intended, all good. I think there's just, needs to be better communication in what the differences are. With the MIAA and the Mass Department.
And, and, and you're who would own that communication, is that the director, is it the school committee, is that, I guess, where does that, where does that start?
I think it starts with the athletics.
So, so one of the broad.
So that, but, but it's, but it also goes to the athletic director, the principal, the student athlete, to the school. I think ultimately it's all my ownership. Uh, and there are differences, and I think, you know, one of the things came up around concussion workouts. We are bound by MIAA and Mass Department of Health Regulations. Which might be different than what some people are used to from their involvement in sports or other organizations or even the larger metropolitan community, but that's what we're bound to.
So, all told though, it seems like a very positive report, very positive athletic program, uh, bringing a lot of scenarios for improvement. Um, and I, I appreciate your diligence and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Seven.
Nothing else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seven. Ms. Hannah.
Um, you know, I second what Mr. Dial said, there's some concerns with the currentness and everything. I know there's some concerns around parents being able to come forward anonymously. Um, I don't think that was necessarily like fully addressed with parents as a whole in general, um. But it is what it is. They're not gonna come forward, they're not gonna come forward. So I don't know how to get them to, in the, in a way they feel like they're protected or anything, so. Um, I think it's interesting, eighty-six percent of the student body is participating in sports. I mean, that's a huge number, it's more than a lot of, you know, some of these other things that we've talked about having a mountain. You know, an athletic committee, um, that we're doing, I think is, was voted in and everything, so. I think that's um gonna be an important step, you know, just making sure that these athletes are getting, um, you know, the full positive experience from athletics. So, um, I think from a safety standpoint, the concerns around concussion, whether like a lot of these things were, that were brought up in the early stages of this whole process have never been addressed in terms of what we did. So you didn't find anything from concussion program, or whether it's all of that sort of stuff, what even how to train.
But that would be, that would go into the coaches' handbook.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know. Okay, and the coaches would be trained through that.
Yes.
Okay, and then how are coaches trained right now? So when a new coach comes in, how are they kind of, how are we ensuring? The train, I know there's like background check, gaps, things like that. So I just wanna understand like what we're doing now to make sure none of that.
So I believe.
And maybe this isn't a question for you.
Well, I can, I'll answer a little bit. Hiring a coach is the same thing as hiring a teacher. There's a step that the district has, that they have to go through all that process. Now, with the onboarding, what's happening is, in that particular sport, it depends upon the coaches, the head coach, how they deal with the assistants and volunteers. How are they doing now? Is there a formal program? No, that's something that we'd like to work on, the coaches' handbook. Um, but there is for core reads and background checks and all that, you have to.
And I would say that one of the things that we did this year is, in the past, um. Sir Rotandi has done training at, at the start of each season for all of the coaches. This year, he's colla- collaborated with Dr. Scholins because we've enhanced the coach training at the start of each season. Um, to include all of the things that are necessary, like process procedures, but also Title Nine, Title Six, all of the things that everybody who works in the district needs to have.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we've done a far better job um, between Mr. Rotandi and Dr. Scholins of making sure everyone is attending and um, there are some, some people who've had one-on-one sessions.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that there's a difference between what's happening and what's written down.
Yeah.
Um, and our biggest criticism on the academic side was that we didn't have a written curriculum. I don't think anybody here would argue that we didn't teach anything in the last ten years. But the evolution of the curriculum hasn't been formalized, hadn't been consistent, so we did that. And so I think for the communication perspective, for, you know, covering all our bases, for including some of the volunteer people that I don't think were uh always included before, I think that is happening and it needs to be.
Um. And then I think just trying to understand, like, I think this is great, and I think you make some amazing, really good recommendations in terms of what we're doing. And I think I would just ask the school committee, like, what are the next steps here, you know, or maybe a good question to me, like, what are the next steps in terms of all the work we've just done?
Yeah, I think we do this the same way we do our NOS findings and our strategic plan. So I think we take the strategic plan, we take it with the graduate, we take the findings that are here, and we basically create an athletic improvement plan, just like we do a school improvement plan. That's linked to the strategic plan, that is collaborative, um, that we identify timelines and targets and actions that responsible parties, and we present that in the fall. Um, you know, I don't think we're in a position, just like school improvement plans are, to present that tonight. I think tonight is an information session, and we take it. And, you know, weigh what makes sense for us. I think the booster conversation will be an interesting one. Because I do think it has some Title Nine implications, I think it has funding implications. I think there's definitely an equity conversation that needs to be had around, um, who funds what and, and to what level. Um, and what should be kind of collective resources that everybody can benefit from, and what are sport-specific things that we need to focus on. So. I, I think this is, this is what we do in the summer, you know?
Ms. Leskey.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to have met with you, um, and also I think too, um. It's so valuable in my mind, um, to hear outside perspectives. Um, and not only that, but people who come with a lot of professional experience. Um, I feel as if you gave us a higher level view. It's really easy to not see the forest but for the trees. Um, and I think sometimes when we're dealing with lots of passion and lots of excitement, and sports are important to a lot of people in Cohasset, um, that, that we see the trees and we don't see the forest anymore. And I think this is an opportunity to step back and see that forest. Um, and helped us to do that and, and gave us a really, I think, good, big picture things to think about, sort of values to think about, um, when sort of uh thinking about improving our athletics department and our athletics programming for, um, for our kids. Something as simple as making sure that sports equitably get acknowledgement for their achievements. Uh, for someone like me who has a child who plays a non-traditional sport, like, that's huge, that's huge. Um, this, you know, for those kids that, that compete, you know, miles and miles away from, um, from our home, from our home fields, um, that's really, that's huge. And I think it makes, it's a changing culture. And I think that you've offered us some, um, really sort of important sort of ways to look at improving culture around athletics.
Yeah, okay, I think it, you know, the clarity around what our mission is, is critical, because I think I played sports in high school, played three sports, I played individual in college athletics. So it takes, it's, for me personally, it's made a major difference in my educational evolution, the other things that I discovered about myself or that somebody else saw in me that I didn't think I, I could do, or the ability to do hard things. All of these things are important. When you look at the volume of the students that play athletics and the resources that we dedicate to them, there are eighty coaches that we have on staff. That's twice as many coaches as we have teachers. Right? With about the same number of kids. Now, I have two registered assistants, eight department heads, a transportation coordinator, an athletic director. Um, I, I have a lot of resources that help me manage that. I'm very proud of what we've been able to do with one person. Because ultimately, the, the, all of it falls under my responsibility and the day-to-day operations fall under one person. Um, that's a big responsibility and there's a lot of moving parts. And it's something that's very personal, you know, it's something that costs a lot of money, especially with the development of, of you know, youth sports in the last ten, twenty years, you know, probably more ten than the last twenty. Um, so it, it, there's a lot of emotion that gets brought into it, and it's a human being business, and anytime you're in a human being business, you have conflicts, and, and that's to be expected. I don't think we're ever gonna avoid that. But I do think that it's very important for us to articulate what our priorities are for educational athletics. It's not the same necessarily as a club team. It's not the same as an independent school, um, and the goal is not winning championships, although that's really nice. I, I enjoy giving out the notes, but that isn't the sole purpose. Uh. It's, it's personal growth for, for kids, because at some point you're gonna get to it, like I found out in my first medicine.
I think too, to that point, there's also such academic benefit that's been shown over and over and over again that getting some time outside, moving your body, and also having to learn how to plan your time and use your time efficiently um, is, are, are, are really just life stamps.
Yeah, and kids are in school by default. They're in athletics by choice, right? So you have you already have built-in student engagement, and you have a willingness and an enthusiasm to share that with the younger kids. You have those built-in community connectories. Uh. And a real sense of, of pride that kids are able to do those things and share them with younger kids, and that's something that I really want to get. Because it's, it is when you do it right, it's a.
Thank you, Ms. Leskey. Um, so thankful, I, I, um. I'm very appreciative of all your work. I think that, uh. This report, uh, the need for it, I think arose out of, you know, some controversy, and it's helped, I think, give some positive direction to this. Um, I think that it's important, because I, I just did this last meeting when Principal Scott was here highlighting some accomplishments of the high school. And I think that it's, even though this, the, you know, this arose out of, I don't wanna, I don't know if it was controversy, concern, right? Um, and, and that's what we're here for. We're here to address concern and, and take it seriously and, and, and evaluate, you know, strengths and weaknesses of our programming, but I think a lot of what Mr. Otavio and Ellie's report just stated was very positive. I think a lot of it was positive, and I don't wanna get lost in the opportunities for growth. And I think that it's important, just like I did last meeting, uh, on the academic side of things, to just take a brief moment and step back and acknowledge what we've accomplished, um, you know, with all these students participating. And Mr. Otavio and Ellie was just saying that our students, uh, one of the things stood out about your report, and your student, you said our students love playing for the school. They love, they love playing on the teams. They, that, that, that means that, you know, they're, they're, they're generally happy, right? And there's gonna be exceptions to that. Um, just like every rule, but I think we, it's important to always step back and, and recognize what we're doing right. And there are a lot of things that I think we're just, uh, highlighted this, that we're doing right. And I think that, um, AD Rotandi and his team and our, our staff coaches um, and everyone that contributes to the success of, uh, our athletics program should, should, should be commended and should be, you know, applauded for that because we do win championships and we have a lot of kids that are having a lot of fun uh, and learning a lot from participating in their team, uh, sports and the athletic program. Um, obviously there's room for growth, like, room for growth, and I said, that that could be said for any facet of our district's operations. Um, we're constantly trying to improve. I think that, you know, we wanna make sure that, uh, Ms. Hannah brought up, um, you know, what, what comes out of this, what is the next step. And I think that Principal Scott's suggestion, um, you know, uh, and I'm, I'm sure that our central office is gonna have to have discussions about this amongst its leadership team. But I think that, you know, what you suggested, uh, out of the gate seems like a really positive way of dealing with this one that I think focuses on our North Star, which is making sure that we're acting in the best interest of the students and what is, what is best for the students. And if we were students, what we would wanna see, so, um. I, 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 I love approaching it in that, you know, in the Sip, in the school improvement plan manner, or, or even like because I think a lot, there were a lot of, a lot mentioned about involving like stakeholder input and communication and collaboration. So it, it may be important, you know, just like the SIPs involved, the school council, or the cell phone issue involved the task force, or the strategic plan invited students and, and teachers and parents and school committee members to be on that. I think there should be some thought given to how we structure that, but I loved how you thought we might, I, I think that is a lot more of a um, purposeful and, and probably more constructive approach than just having a specific school committee led, committee to do that, because I think it'll, I, I, first of all, you're gonna involve a lot more uh, like professional expertise from the ed and athletic, uh, programming side. Um, but you're gonna, I think you're gonna be inviting more stakeholder input that way. Um, I think it'll also seem less daunting, um, and, uh, less, uh, indicting, uh, to the staff. So, um, and we wanna make sure this is like like, I'm looking at these, um, these recommendations, and a lot of them seem great. I think a lot of them seem like they're gonna take a lot of work, right? I mean, we just did a strategic planning process and like developing missions for the district, all this stuff. It's, it, it requires a lot of thought. I think it, it's best if there are a lot of minds involved in that inquiry. So, um, I don't think this is gonna be like, I, I don't think you're gonna be able to accomplish like everything over the summer. I think it's gonna be. I mean, I, I, I think even if you have, I think an improvement plan is gonna take a, a, a while, but I think it should certainly start sooner rather than later, right? but I think it should certainly start sooner rather than later, right? That's, that's my position. So I, I don't know. I mean, I, I think that Superintendent Shannon, I, I think it's important you talk to your leadership team, and I don't think we're going to reach any sort of like, I, I think Ms. Hannah's question's important, because we just had this done, and it was done for a reason. There's a lot of great information in there. We need to tell the community what we expect to do from this. I don't know that the first time it's presented, we're going to be able to give a comprehensive answer to that. So, um, you know, I just asked that maybe you consult with leadership and figure out, you know, what you want, maybe have some sort of recommended course of action for the, the committee, and we all talk about it, and thought partner on it. Um, because I just don't want, I, I, this, this doesn't have to be, you know, controversial or materialistic in any way. I think it'd be really positive.
Yeah, and I think, you know, they're all intertwined, so it's a little bit different than, like, cafeteria services, right? Or custodial services. Those are also intertwined, but not to the extent that kids having a happy, fulfilling lunch is not going to drive culture. Kids in a community that prides itself on athletics, maybe disproportionately, but it does, right? Focusing on that strength and recognizing that as an opportunity can drive belonging for the rest of the kids, whether they play sports or not. You know, if, if these are the kids that are being held up, who have opportunities, who can take it upon themselves to act with inspiring character, can recognize their own weaknesses, can grow purposefully, and can share that with the other kids, absolutely that will grow, both academically, it'll grow the arts department, it'll, it'll demonstrably change the culture.
I, 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 I agree. So I, I, Superintendent Shannon, I don't know if that's like, I, I'm just, I'm just to take a suggestion, but I, 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 you know, turn it to you to decide on, you know, what, like, how do you envision us?
I think very much like that. I think that, um, I just want to thank somebody, I would like to thank Mark. Really struggling with that one. Um, for all his time and effort, um, it was great to work with you and get to know you throughout this entire process. I think he brought, um, a great perspective and a level of expertise that was really helpful. Um, and I just also, before I get to, I just want to also say that there were a lot of really great things that were highlighted in this report, and I've been here for a hot minute, but that really is a result of the work that Principal Scott and Athletic Director Rotandi have done, and all of the coaches. Um, and so I want to thank them for the athletic department that we do have. Um, I think everything that both Principal Scott and you have said is the course of action that we'd like to take. I think that we've just come out of the strategic planning process, and that using a modified version of that, not with a group of thirty, but smaller, but, um, using a modified version of that to build out what our plan will be, um, is what I think could be most beneficial. I think it's, um, it's well timed, because we have just finished the NEOS report for the academics as well. We have the brand-new strategic plan, and now we're going to work to develop this, and so everything will be aligned. I think that, um, Principal Scott is absolutely correct that, um, athletics and academics are incredibly intertwined, as are the staff members, um, who provide the athletics and the academics. And so bringing them together will be really important, um, and I think that this is a huge component of the culture of our school, and, um, this is a moment where it's, it's created a really strong culture, and it has the power to make it even better, and so I'm excited for that.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you so much. Uh, like I said, we have a full meeting tonight, so I'm going to continue to move on, and that athletics review report authored by, uh, Mr. Otto Vianelli will be published somehow.
Yep, so it's already in the packet that went out, so everybody has had access to it, but I will put it in the next newsletter as well.
Yes, that'd be great if we could somehow highlight it, just so everyone's aware and everyone's able to read that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, even though people have had the opportunity, but maybe highlight.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, um, as we suspended earlier, uh, this topic, I'm just going to revisit the reorg, uh, because we didn't have a full panel at the very beginning of the meeting, but now we do, and I wanted to wait until we did that. This is to, uh, this is to select or elect, um, different officers, um, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year for the school committee. As the chair, I will take the opportunity to make the first nomination. I nominate Jennifer Leskey to serve as chair for twenty-five, twenty-six, their second nomination.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hannah. All in favor?
Assuming that you, uh, thank you.
Yeah. That's true. No, no, that's true. It's different than a typical motion. So do you, do, would you accept that nomination? Okay, so they're now a seconded nomination? Ms. Hannah seconds that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You abstain?
Yeah.
So the motion carries by both of, uh, four members to one abstention and passes. So, uh, these, um, changes take place, uh, and are effective as of the next committee meeting. That's how we usually do it here at the school committee. So, um, congratulations and condolences, Ms. Schlesky, on your appointment to chair the school committee starting next meeting. Uh, vice chair, is there a nomination for the vice chair position?
I'll nominate Kurt Blom. You have chair experience, if you were to say.
I do. Um, okay. Oh, yep, I'll do it. Okay. All right, can you take?
Uh, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Staying? Who carries? Four, zero.
All right, so we have vice chair now, secretary, which, uh, first of all, I asked that we change the name of secretary to clerk. Is there any objection to that?
Can we logistically just do that, or do we need to go look at bylaws or?
I think we'd have, if there is something, we'd have to make a change to it.
But, uh, question, we have the authority to do it. I guess that's something done by town.
No.
No?
Sure. No, I just think it, I, I mean, I just think it makes more sense. I think that's what most, doesn't the select board use the term clerk?
We use the term clerk, but Lance's question is, i- i- if in the school committee bylaw says we will appoint a secretary, then we appoint a secretary. We don't appoint a clerk. I've just, whatever the bylaw.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm unaware of that, so, uh, if I don't have the answer, I, I just, I, it's kind of nomenclature more than anything.
Why don't we appoint a secretary and call them a clerk, just by cut, cut and parlor?
Or we can just find out and look at the, and see what we need to do to change that. I'd, I'd, before changing, I just, one extra week.
It's a long meeting, so maybe I should have brought that up. Uh, secretary clerk, whatever you want to call it, is there a nomination for someone? Is, is there anyone willing to do it? It's, um, I can't do two jobs. I wouldn't do it.
I mean, I guess I, I can. I am speaking, so I'll.
I will, I will, uh, yeah, I will, I will assist you, Mr. Dial.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's an unenviable role, but it's really not that bad.
Well, and it's called secretary, like, it was called clerk. I'd be all over.
All right. Well, I'll nominate, I'll nominate Lance Dial then.
Okay.
Is there a second to the nomination?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Evans. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm going to oppose. Okay, sorry.
Your extension. Uh, motion carries by a vote of four members, one abstention, so Mr. Dial will be the secretary moving forward.
I'm working my way down the.
Only this. Uh, that's, those are the only officer positions that we need to, uh, assign. Uh, so we'll do some committee, uh, positions or assignments later on in the meeting. For now, we'll just move into the superintendent update, which hopefully is fairly brief, Superintendent Shannon.
It is. Yeah. I'm going to be quick. Okay. First, I just wanted to share a quick Keller and a note for next fall, um, and we're going to remind people in September over and over again, but Deer Hill and Osgood, due to a couple of, um, other events, had to swap their back-to-school nights. So Deer Hill's open house will be on September ninth, Osgood's will be on September eleventh. Our, um, website already reflects that, and we will give notice about it again in the fall multiple times. Um, it's been a busy couple of weeks since we last met. Field trips, egg drop, Snapper Sneaker Day, biking to school sort of sums up a lot of our activities. Um, it's been really fun to watch the fifth graders use their science, math, and perseverance skills to protect their eggs as they get dropped from the Deer Hill roof, um, and we're excited to see what iterations they make for next week when it gets dropped from the fire truck ladder height. Um, I haven't been to a Snapper Sneaker Day in many years, and, but I did get to go this week, and so that was super fun. All the kiddos decked out in their crazy hair and their socks and all the things, and they played relay races, and I can remember, you know, last minute, my kids telling me they had to get their hair spray painted, but they had such a good time, and the weather could not have been better for them. Um, and CSCR, one of our amazing community partners hosted not one, but two field trips in the last week. The second graders also went and did a field trip with CSCR along with, and so just a thank you to them. Um, as a follow-up to the presentation we just had, um, and to recognize all of our teams, uh, it's amazing, but I'm going to give you a little rundown of all of our teams that are currently still in or have participated in the, um, postseason. Uh, so, Boys Track specifically, um, a very small but mighty team of twelve participants went to states and finished second overall as a team for all of Division Six, with many finishing in the top eight in their individual events. Nathan Astier won the state championship in the pentathlon. Will McLaughlin won the state championship in the two-hundred-meter run and the long jump. Nathan and his brother Nicholas, along with Mike Capilio and Will McLaughlin, are, have qualified and are going to participate in the meet of champions tomorrow and Saturday, which is like all states, so it doesn't matter what division you are. It's just all of the track people, so we wish them good luck. Um, baseball was the number nineteen seed. They upset their first opponent, and so they are in Hamilton winning, win them as we speak, playing. I don't know what the score is, because we've been here. Um, softball made the playoffs but lost their first game on the road against Gardner, but they've made the playoffs for the third straight year. Girls Lacrosse is the number one seed. They've won their first two games. They're going to play the winner of Nantucket, Manchester Essex, um, next. Um, Boys Lacrosse, also the number one seed, also won their first two games. They're waiting for the winner of Lynnfield-Littleton. When those two games are going to be is up in the air, because of all of those schools, lots of graduations are happening. Um, and so we can't have games on the days of graduation, so stay tuned. Girls Tennis, number five seed, won their first two rounds, and also played at Hamilton Winham this afternoon. I don't know who won yet. Boys Tennis, also number five seed, won the first two rounds, is playing number four Fairhaven tomorrow. Um, Sailing, though not an MIAA sport, won their Class B championship, which is very exciting. And girls golf had a great season. They did not qualify for the postseason, but Zoe Willock did qualify and played for the section tournament. So every sport had someone playing in the postseason, which, as Mark said, is quite an achievement for such a tiny little district. Um, I also want to give a huge shout-out to Ms. Moriarty, Ms. Merkowitz, Mr. Scott, all of the teachers and the Class of Twenty Twenty Five who made this year's prom a great memorable event. Um, I was there at the post, at the pre-prom. Um, it was a little drizzled. People were still happy, so I did, in, I don't know, everybody still looked perfect after coming in from the rain. Um, I also would like to thank the pre-parent, pre- and post-prom committee for their work on the pre-prom event, for keeping our students safe during the post-prom. The night from start to finish was a huge success. Um, it's definitely senior celebration time. Their last day of classes was last week. They have been in school here and there all week doing senior activities. Tomorrow is their clapout, where they walk through all of the schools that they have been in, and then they leave the high school to cheers, and they get in their cars. Um, and then Saturday at one is graduation. Um, so we're looking forward to celebrating the Class of Twenty Twenty Five more formally on Saturday. And as we wind down, a few reminders. This coming Tuesday is CMS Art Nights, and it's already being set up, so I can tell people it's going to be a great event. Come see it. The last day of school is a true, um, half-day. It'll be Tuesday, June seventeenth. I will be sending out what times all the schools are being dismissed at, um, probably on Friday. And a reminder that everyone is invited to the South Shore Unity Council Juneteenth Celebration. Celebration is being held after school gets out on June nineteenth. It's from four to seven P.M. at the Bandstand in Kingdom Harbor. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that report, um, and thank you for mentioning the clapout. Uh, school committee members, if you want to see something really awesome and somewhat emotional, come to the high school to see them leave. It's awesome. Uh, I try to make it every year, and you have to just know which time, you have to just call Principal Scott or Superintendent Shannon to figure out what, what time exactly will happen. It's, it's a really special moment, and all of our high school staff that's sitting here will know that. It's incredible. It's a really cool thing. So, um, this just in, Master and Law's chapter seventy-one, section thirty-six requires us to appoint a secretary, so end to that controversy right there. So that's why we keep Mr. Dial around and, uh, and we want.
Interesting lawyer.
So, you know, we know, know more that this fly-by-night operation will cease to exist as of next meeting.
Going to cease?
Um, moving on to our teaching and learning updates, well, sorry.
My apologies. Yeah, just, um, I know it's end of the year, but there was one day, I think it was Snapper Sneaker, and the egg drop was the same day at Deer Hill Osgood, and it was just chaos, so.
Yes, it was. Yeah.
Uh, so back to the talking, having people in the room, having, be sure we've got the parent groups and this, everyone. That way we block off those things. Okay, just, we are wrong.
Totally agree. Yeah. We tried so hard.
Because we were as a part, too.
Yeah, and, and apparently nobody talked to somebody else, so that communication, so. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, roll of superintendent's updates? No, then we turn to our sup, uh, Assistant Superintendent Schools, Dr. Liza Stone, to give us some, uh, academic updates.
Quick, so as you know, it's the end of the year, so.
Sure is.
Um, but assessments are winding down. MCAS have finished up for the, actually, all school, actually. Um, there may be some, um, makeups, but this, but as far as I know, we're all done with MCAS. Uh, high school is the last one to have theirs in early June this week, and then uh, all of the benchmark assessments for our K through eight students, that is winding down, will be complete on Friday. Reports will go out on the seventeenth, the last day of school, and those will be available in Aspen. So if you are in K through five, you'll have DIBL's reports and I Ready, and if you are for, uh, six through seven, you will have your reports from I Ready. We decided last year that if kids were benchmarking in the eighth grade, they did not have to continue on, because they have so much, um, additional testing in eighth grade from MCAS and our civic, so, um, we'll look at that again this year and see if that's, that's what we did, so we'll save, we'll look at two years of data on that. Um, and I think that was really it. Otherwise, we're just winding things down, and it's been a great year.
Sure has. Thank you, Dr. Stone. Any questions, Dr. Stone? Moving right into our, uh, our esteemed Director of Student Services and his report. Um, I'd invite our CPAC representative, Ms. Davis, President of CPAC, to come to the table and join us. Anyone else?
Yeah, there we have it. Yes, Melissa Looney, the new secretary.
Yes, please come, join us. Welcome.
Thank you.
Great. So the first agenda item, um, is the introduction. You know, this past spring, I, um, in my first year as the Director of Student Services, was tasked with finding two new team chairs at the elementary level and the secondary level, and I have to say that after a very competitive search with a number of highly qualified applicants, Melissa really rose, um, to the top of that pool. Um, she comes with a lot of experience, both chairing initial evaluation meetings, reevaluation meetings, kind of running the full game of specialization process, procedure, program development, um, and then, you know, through like a second round, meeting staff. Um, she really rose to the top as a candidate, and I'm happy to say that she's accepted the position. Um, so she'll be starting this summer for a few days and then really taking it off next year. Um, so we just wanted to introduce her, since this is such a forward, you know, parent-facing position, student-facing position. Uh, and again, this is a lot of experience and aligns really nicely with some, um, I'll talk about in my presentation tonight. Just ways to move forward, um, to the strategic plan, but I'm not sure if you want to say anything. I just put you on the spot, but.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been wonderful being here tonight and hearing about the initiatives and planning that's happening in Khaset, and I look forward to supplementing that and advancing, um, what's already in place under the direction of Michael. So I'm very happy to come on board and get to know you all more this fall.
Welcome. We're, we're, we're grateful to have you, and we're glad that you appreciated all the information that you heard tonight. Every single time I listen to.
Don't scare her away.
Quite a like, dude.
Well, welcome. Thank you so much.
Happy to be here.
Yeah, I'm excited to work with you.
Okay, all right. Don't put my kids in that. Thank you, everyone.
I'm an alum in, just to share, I need requests to share the screen. just to share, I need requests to share the screen.
Granted, Mr. Stapleton.
So, um, for our presentation tonight, this is my last, um, you know, update of the school year. So I wanted to kind of talk about some recapping of information and. So the first piece is just my initial, um, you know, monthly data report, which as you can see here at the elementary level, there are 17 annual review meetings. There are eight, uh, reevaluations out of those eight, seven students were eligible, one student was found not eligible. Uh, there are nine initial evaluation meetings, which was, um, you know, a higher number than in previous months. Um, out of those nine, one of those came through M T S S and that one student was eligible. Eight of those came from family requests and, uh, three were eligible. And just to clarify where those came from, as we think about process and procedure and identification of students. Um, one came from a private school, so there were not a student attending class public schools. One of those eligibility's came from early intervention, um, which I've talked about in previous presentations. And then one came from the preschool, um, so again, not really old members of our, of our school community, but, um, you know, still active members. Um, and then five of those parent requests were found not eligible and not presenting educational disabilities. There was one class of resident evaluation and then there were four independent evaluation reports that were reviewed. At the secondary level, there were seven annual reviews, uh, there were six reevaluations, three were eligible and three were not eligible. And then one, um, initial evaluation came from parent request and that student was found eligible. Uh, I ran two out of district annual review meetings and then one reevaluation meeting, um, so probably the busiest month in the Office of Student Services, I must say, with 56 total meetings, um, which spread us all pretty thin. So I have to give the evaluators, you know, whether it's speech language, school psychologist, um, across the entire district. Did, you know, obviously hit compliance timelines, we juggled scheduling conflicts, we juggled Snapper Sneaker Day events, um, it was definitely a challenging month for the, um, for the office. Correct, so when we think about, and moving forward, this is something that I do want to like address. Moving forward, when you think about how that impacts like this front, like the student facing work of our staff, um, when we have this many meetings. And so I'm thinking about how we structure meetings moving forward, um, how we handle like this evaluation process, how to move meetings up. Potentially, as you can see, 56 is more than in previous months. Um, and so I think when we think about the end of the year with progress reports, with report cards, with events. Um, it definitely puts a strain on the department, um, and so something that I feel like we, we managed this year, but definitely something I want to look into next year for how we structure and see things out. Um, so that is.
Yeah, that'll be really important, Mr. Stapleton, so let's hear more about that.
Yeah.
That's, that seems, I mean, that's, that's not tenable for like multiple months.
Correct, and it also plays into like the full-time employment status of different positions when we think what school psychologist who's doing the testing. Um, this was an interesting month, definitely, um, and so I have some thoughts and I'm looking forward to some downtime this summer to kind of process the end of this year here and how that went. And then, I mean, also being down a team chair has played a factor in this too and how like things get scheduled and coordinated, so it's all interconnected. Um, definitely something to look into forward. For the I P return data, again, we're, um, in very good shape here, you know, we have 238 accepted I Ps. Um, we do have some partially rejected ones, which I'm working through and then response pending. Um, so again, when we think about how we've rolled over into new I P format, I would say this is, you know, highly successful acceptance rate, um, with the, across all schools. In the district. Keeping it with the previous director, I just, at the end of the year, and I'll update this after the last month of school for September. 2025, I did update the percentages of active I Ps in each school. So we did see a jump at Osgood School from 16% in September up to, you know, close to 19% of students receiving special education services.
What is that in number of students?
Um, I could pull.
Tw- 20% of 300 probably.
Yeah.
Cause we're not including pre-K, right?
So, no, so it's pre-K through two.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, out of total students.
Okay, so maybe.
It's.
Be like 72 students or something like that.
I wonder how to translate that jump in percentage, it's just like.
Yeah, so it's, it's a few, I would say like five, five to six.
Okay, alright.
Um, and again, like state averages fall between 18 to 20% of students where we should be, so we're like a little, we're within the range of. Um, at Deer Hill, there's, you know, 18% of students, um, receiving special education services. The middle school 17.45 and then at, at the high school, um, a drop to 12. Which again, to me speaks to the process working, right, we really want to see students develop skills to no longer require special education services. Um, so again, I think this is just helpful data. We look at the disability categories, similar to last year, the health disability category and the specific learning disability category are the two highest, um, in the district. Which again, is similar, um, trends across the state.
Sorry, repeat that, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, the two highest categories of disability categories are health, um, and then specific learning. Um, when we think about what the primary disabilities for students are. Thinking ahead to next year and after, you know, this first year here, um, I do want to highlight that a lot of my updates have been special education focused. But the Office of Student Services really, um, does oversee, you know, multiple services and supports. And so as I think to next year and different presentations, I will be kind of touching upon some other areas. Um, one of my major projects this spring, um, and I had talked previously about the integrated focus monitoring process happening next year for special education. A lot of data collection, working with the state, um, for compliance purposes, um. You know, that will be for special education, but it is also for our English language learner education program. And so I had to complete the self-assessment for that this spring, which was similar to the special education one of, um, meeting with staff, you know, uploading data. Looking at the numbers and patterns and trends over the past five years, and so that will be something that will be coming out, we'll get, you know, some findings on that moving forward into next year. And so that will be, you know, a focus of the future presentation of mine is, um, you know, sorting that. Um, and then also continuing to look at students who are eligible through section 504 for accommodation plans. I had touched on my last, um, presentation that our determination had come out and it had been very close to that. And so I just wanted to highlight some key takeaways here, as you can see, the special education determination matrix outlined by the state of Massachusetts. Uh, we did meet requirements this year, which was, um, a improvement from last year with a score of 93%. And it breaks it down into performance and compliance as like the main possible points. Um, you can see we scored 18 points for, for performance and then a full 16, a 16 for compliance. Compliance really looks at, you know, the follow-up on the formal P R S complaints, making sure that we submit data in a timely fashion. And so we did receive both points there, but I did want to highlight, um, for the performance matrix, and this is available on the website and through D E S I, um, some observations. And so these are really the criteria that were looked at that created this determination. Um, some observations that I noted are really when we think about MCASTs. The only area where we did not receive a full score, which you can see a full score will be two, was the proficiency percentage of fourth grade children with disabilities against grade level standards, um, for reading. And so we were below there and that's where we did not receive the full, um, full points, which again, I think this year with CPAC, we've had a lot of dialogue about. You know, reading instruction even today, um, this afternoon, I would say, um, and this is an area that we're addressing and that we're looking at. But other observations, you can see we're above the state target in every other area and that we should really continue to monitor the reading. And, you know, also why, I think it's important to note, this is a very small percentage of students, you know, within that grade level. And so I always get cautious about over sharing about just them and that, their, their profiles. But, um, when I, knowing the grade level and knowing some of the, the makeup of, um, students, um, it's definitely errant to watch. But it is a significantly higher level of need, um, and so again, that could contribute to why the percentage points, um, are lower in areas to continue to monitor.
Can you just break that down a little bit, uh, like what, I don't, what is L E A performance and versus the state, like what am I looking?
So the L E A performance is how Cohasset performs against these standards and then the state target is outlined by the state of Massachusetts. Um, for where they would want to be, where, you know, districts L E A should fall.
We are the L E A.
Right, so, so, and I'm, I'm, so I'm guessing like the, the, sort of like the bare minimum that we're looking to achieve is the state target, right? Okay, so we're, so we're going to be focusing on like the areas where we're obviously, like, obviously when you pointed out.
Yep.
And then there's, even though we got like a full score on, uh, like in the second with a 6.67%.
That's a reverse, that's a reverse percentage, because, sorry.
No, so that is like my third observation, percentage of children with disabilities who dropped out. Now, that's like an alarming kind of like criteria, I would say. I did note, and this is part of the reason why we were flagged previously, um, with the last determination. This is coded as students who receive services until age 22. So like there aren't, these aren't students at class high school who are actively dropping out of class at high school. They're students who would be eligible until their 22nd birthday and they don't receive a diploma, which is why they're coded into this category. And you want that to be low.
You want that to be low.
Yeah, 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 so, so we're, we're good on that.
Percentage of students who dropped out, so you want lower percentage.
Right, right, okay, and then, um, right, and then these other ones that are like kind of floating around the state target. We want to look at those too, because those are inverse percentage, those are like, like, for example, proficiency percent of fourth grade children with disabilities getting grade level standards.
Context was important with that.
Yeah, yeah.
The context of that class.
Yeah, that's like the air in the making.
Right, right, right.
So I was reassured by these findings, again, always room for continuous improvement and growth, but it was a significant, you know, we weren't flagged as needing intervention, um, anymore. Which is positive.
Good job.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it was a lot of the year before too, so a lot of, a lot of pieces into this. Uh, and then looking forward just into the future, um, and how the Office of Student Services aligns with the strategic plan. I won't spend too much time with, you know, just for the sake of time tonight, but, um, compass point number one, the teaching, learning and reading. And really the initiative tied to multi-tiered systems of support will be a major focus next year. It was a focus on mine this year, but, um, just as the year evolves, you know, there's definitely more work to be done across each building. You know, tied to both what, you know, Principal Godette and Principal Sullivan shared tonight with their plans. Um, but this will be a major, you know, area that I'll be supporting as well as different, um, different ways as we think about tier support. And this is strengthening M T S process, communication and procedure. And then related to the other compass points that aren't necessarily tied to the strategic plan, but things that have come up and that I've noticed through my first year. As the Director of Student Services, um, the wellness compass point, really looking at stress level of students and how the Office of Student Services supports mental health services, wraparound services and continues to look at, you know, social emotional programming and access to different community-based supports. Um, and then thinking about how we continue to develop inclusive practices for community engagement, you know, really thinking about increased family involvement in special education, section 504 process. I think we made some great gains this year, but how that connects to just overall community engagement. Um, continuing to work closely with CPAC and thinking about how, what presentations we'll be working on next year, the scheduling and how that works with our, um, with our Apple. Partnership this year. And then a major area that I'll be continuing to monitor and, you know, keep a close eye on related to compass point number four for resources. Um, out of district placements, you know, the cost of those out of district placements and how those are supported. Um, and then moving forward as we think to the future, program evaluation and visioning. Um, and then also continuing to think what special education program development, as we think about, you know, the least restrictive environment for students and how we can build programming. And then again, some final staff updates, um, I mentioned, you know, obviously Melissa was here tonight, um, our new secondary team chair. And Megan Green, you couldn't make it tonight, but she has worked as the classic school psychologist for the past five years. And she's accepted the position as the elementary team chair, which I'm really excited about as well, as we think about building up that team at the elementary level. Um, and then we're underway for hiring for a number of positions within the department. Um, we're looking for a preschool and kindergarten special education teacher, that is a change from just a full-time preschool teacher. Um, really, there was a need for a more designated special education teacher at the kindergarten level. And based on preschool enrollment numbers, we were able to slip that this year, that will evolve and change, we'll keep a close eye on that. But I think that was a nice way to kind of expand, um, special education offerings at the kindergarten level. Where we did see an increase in referrals this year, um, within that grade level. Um, we're in the process for hiring our seventh grade special education liaison and then we'll be looking to build up classic middle school, school psychologist position, since Megan's moving to the elementary level. And then, just because I'm hypersensitive to it, because, but, uh, these, these are not ads to staff, these are. Uh, and then just thinking ahead to the future, the work that was driven by the sped strategies work this year. So thinking about co-teaching differentiation, how that connects to the strategic plan. Um, you know, tonight, through the reading dialogue, we also talked about just materials. And one thing that I'll be doing is looking for an audit of what specialized instructional materials and resources we have for reading, writing and math. We can formalize that to build up for the future, um, to improve that direct specialized, you know, in materials. Um, and then continuing similar to the last presentation about executive functioning and test taking. And then looking at absenteeism and that's how it connects to students with disabilities. Um, so those are kind of what I'm looking forward to next year and year number two. I went quickly tonight, but it's been a long night, so.
Sure has, any questions for, uh, your student services, uh, and or before we do that, any, any additions, any comments from CPAC?
The only thing I wanted to say, I saw your faces when you got alarmed with the six kids at it at Joseph Osgood for services. But the only good thing about that, I think, is that that means they're identified early, which we were below the percentage, right? If we're only at 15, 16%, and then they'll be off their I P sooner. So like your number should, I would think, go lower over time, and the whole idea is, um, identify early, so.
That was a good, that was a good phase, because it shows that our identification procedures are working, that's why.
I think that's.
That's, that's why I was.
Yeah.
And it also is more of like the, the 20% figure is kind of like, like with like, at least dyslexia, the, the. That's all I was, that's all I was, I wasn't alarmed, I was, I was actually happy that.
It did seem like a big number.
Stop indicting me, Ms. Davis.
Like, I want to just jump into, so Melissa is bringing a lot of like program development experience and it's experienced like facilitating team process. Megan, who will be new to the role at the elementary level, is a school psychologist, and so I think that really helps strengthen the team. Lift us up even more, we're thinking about the identification of students, what evaluation tools we're using, um, so I'm, I'm really excited to have both of those.
Uh, just, uh, if we move, the question, swats trouble, main question is, what's the best time to do these evaluations? Because you said moving them up, but is there something we lose by, you know, uh, do we have to do them, may there be a real benefit to that?
Yeah, that's, so it's a good question, so what I've learned over my time in special education is that there will constantly always be a flow of evaluations. Some reevaluations we could look to move up. One area that I've noticed this year, having been really involved at the elementary levels, is those transition years. So if there's reevaluations happening in second grade, right?
Yeah.
Um, like that would be, those would be good ones to move up to the early spring, so that we can talk about planning for the next year, same with fifth. So there's an ebb and flow to it, definitely, um, it's the initial evaluations that we can't print always predict.
Yeah.
But if we are identifying students early enough in the school year based on like different assessment data, then it could change, but parent requests can come in at any point in time.
I'm good, thank you, thanks for all the work.
Miss Lashley?
Yeah, I think my question was along the lines of Ms. Renn's around that sort of end of year panic, like, is my kid okay? And whether or not they're, and, and also as teachers, like, actually, I'm not okay with where, you know, and now that we're really coming to the end of the year and whether or not there, there are triggers in place, um, or mechanisms that can be put in place, like in an equal break kind of timeframe that might ease that. Or probably even earlier, it's like February break, well, to sort of ease that, that load, because that's, that seems like a lot. And I think to that piece about, um, teachers having to be out of their classrooms at a critical time. For students for just general classroom management and, um, things of that nature, it, it makes, I think it makes it stressful for everyone, um, so.
Yeah, definitely, and I, I think the uptake came after parent teacher conferences is what, and I had an experience that.
Yeah.
At the lower level before, it was like a, oh, like, uh, and so I think about like, uh, a goal for next year for me too would be like work with teachers ahead of time, so like we're not so giving surprising information at parent teacher conferences, not to say that that's what was exactly happening. But it definitely like that's where that, that trend picked up, which then led into like the spring requests there, um, so.
Sort of the empowerment to, could, uh, to connect with the family outside of conferences, maybe will, would allow for um, evaluations to happen in a, in a, in a, it's a little bit more even.
Yeah, and then also just strengthening M T S S and that process for how kids are getting intervention, which is like, you know, closely aligned to the strategic plan.
Amazing.
I think one other thing too is that as we go into the fall, like all the, the, what's, 10 to 504 is like, it's not communicating to the parents that the teachers are moving to 504. Like, and, and so I don't know if there's a way to do that to, like, as they enter in, especially in those transition years between schools. To like reassure the parents, like, don't worry, we got your kids, like, we know the accommodations and everything. Because it really is like you, it's not communicated, then you go into your first meeting and you're like, do you know they're on a 504 or not? Like, what are we working with here, you know, so I think there is like some kind of communication.
Yeah, so they are legally required to read them ahead of time.
But as a mom, I don't know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I found that out, so I asked the question, so I think there's.
So that's something, as we think about like professional development in those opening days of school, I know in previous years, it's been like allocated time given to teachers for that. Um, and that is part of the opening days too, but yeah.
Yeah, I just, it's one of these, I think, especially when you go from Deer Hill over here to the middle school. Tier Hill over here to the middle school.
Alright, anything else? Okay, well, um, Mr. Evans really likes to hear me talk, so, uh but the best thank you I can give you right now is I wanna give you a big thank you, you're amazing this year. Please to let you leave, so. Don't you do that.
Thanks, everyone.
Alright, thank you. Bye, Ms. Davis, thank you. Alright, moving right along to budget resource and governance, uh we have our um high school library collection refurbishment, I'll hand it over to. Uh Superintendent Shannon?
So, on behalf of our Cohasset Mill and High School Library Meeting Specialist, Ms. Kathy Sarudy, I am going to share an update on our. Mill and High School Library refurbishment project, um. This is a project that is really generously sponsored by our Cohasset PSO. And it is a multi-year project that this year alone resulted in six hundred and three new books on our shelves and. One thousand three hundred and twenty-two checkout since September, which is a fifty-six percent increase over last year. Um I think that's amazing, as a former English teacher, the fact that kids are reading that much makes my heart happy. Um and I think it's a direct result of the more up-to-date collections and relevant resources that. Um Kathy and Monty have been able to bring in for projects and research, and so. As we continue with this refurbishment pros- process, tonight we need to do think, two things, but don't do it quite yet. But the first thing is gonna be the vote to approve the reading of the books that are on the list that was in your packet, and to vote to accept this year's. To um PSO donation of ten thousand dollars to continue the project. Um but before I ask you to do that vote, I would like to thank Ms. Montse Gariga for all of the hard work she's done for this project. And the PSO, because without their hard work and generosity for this project, it wouldn't be possible. Um the PSO is a true partner for the schools, as you've heard tonight, and over the last, over the year. Um they support everything from field days to field trips to staff lunches and more, and they are essential. To our work, and we're incredibly grateful for all the big and small things they do to help make the district who we are. And so at this point, I would ask you to vote both for the reading of the books that are listed in your packet. And the accept to vote, vote to accept this year's PSO donation of ten thousand dollars.
Are there any discussion?
Just one quick thing, this last time, I apologize, but Melissa has some kind of what seemingly are cool books, like from like the sixties and seventies.
Yeah, I was about to say the same thing.
And if I remember correctly, what we do is we take them, put them on a bookshelf, anybody who wants them can grab them. The ones that can be donated are, and the ones that remain are ones in such physical poor shape that they are basically. Ready to be read.
Yeah, and I've been fortunate to see emails from Ms. Sarudy that like offer. And remind people to come down and check out the shelves and take their books and things like that, so they are definitely being. Shared out before they are being. Donated or.
I was sad to see the number of uh bald, dull books on this list, like books that I can just.
Well, it doesn't mean that we don't necessarily have any, and it doesn't mean that they don't exist at maybe more grade-appropriate levels.
Yeah, it's just.
Yes.
Gotcha, yep.
Um I I if I could find the the nineteen seventy-six edition of UFOs, is there an answer? I'll just, I'll I'll book her with this.
Mr. That would be like, you could just, if you'd like to read into the record, the number, the the book title and the author, we could do that.
If you'd like, although minutes of this.
Okay.
Uh no, I'm 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 happy with the description of the process, and thank you both very much for for the work you did for our pockets, thank you. So I will make the motion to approve the reading.
Okay, it's been a motion to approve the reading for the list that you have in your packets, document G one.
Second.
Second, uh motion by Mr. Dial, seconded by Mr. Evans, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. Sentions, motion carried unanimously, so please uh proceed with the reading, thank you so much for all that hard work. Second, we need to accept the extremely generous gift from our uh PSO of ten thousand dollars. Is there, there's a motion by Ms. Luskey to accept that gift, is there a second?
Enthusiastically second.
Seconded by Mr. Evans enthusiastically, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, extensions, motion carried unanimously, thank you to the PSO. Uh Ms. Owen, can we send a letter to the PSO thanking them?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you so much, and um. Moving right along, uh is our community relations, thank you, Ms. Sarudy, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Uh moving right along, reports from subcommittees or liaison positions, anything? Or anyone, seeing none, we'll move on to school committee governance, um we do have the subcommittee assignments to consider. Do we wanna do that right now, or do we wanna table that to the next meeting when Slusky takes over? Why don't we do that, why don't we table that to the next meeting, is that okay, is there a motion to table that till next meeting? Seconded?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Evans, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post, extensions, carried unanimously, we'll table that. Uh superintendent's evaluation just on there for me to have an opportunity to remind everyone, every single meeting, to get me your superintendent evaluation, Mr. Evans, you were excluded from that.
Correct.
Ms. Luskey has um sent that to me, uh others have not, so um uh please do so if you can. Uh as soon as possible, so that I can compile that, and then we can, cause I actually have a goal of doing, presenting the superintendent eval. At the next meeting, okay, so everyone be aware of that. Uh approval minutes, we have four sets of meeting minutes to approve, we will do them individually and move in chronological order. First is the uh meeting minutes that are I three in your packet, January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. Are there any, is there any discussion to those minutes, corrections, suggestions, revisions, Mr. Evans, you can't vote on any of these.
I abstain.
Um a motion, motion to approve.
So, so moved.
Second by anyone?
Second.
Second by Ms. Luskey, all in favor, aye? Opposed, extension, one, motion carries by a vote of four members to one extension. Next meeting minutes are February fourth, two thousand twenty-four, any discussion or corrections or revisions? Their motion to approve is presented as I three, motion made by Mr. Mr. Dial, excuse me, it might be I four, I four. Mr. Dial, uh seconded by. Ms. Hannah, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries by a vote of four members to one extension. Minutes are approved, next set is the April, April tenth, two thousand twenty-four public hearing. On uh on school budget, that is I five from your packet, any discussion? Yep, I might have to return.
Yeah.
Any any discussion on this one, though? Any revisions, okay, so. So, everyone here except Ms. Hannah and Mr. Evans, you can't vote, so Ms. Luskey, Mr. Dial and I can vote on these I five minutes.
Uh so, twenty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, then my title was right, never mind.
Yeah, it was out of order.
Just, just, we we have to go back, I I didn't realize how old I am, so, we're gonna have to go back. Um it's, it's, you know, it's nine o'clock at night, worked a full day, sorry, guys.
Let us down again.
Is there uh, is there a motion to approve the April tenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes? For pub- for public hearing, made by Ms. Luskey, seconded by Mr. Dial, um all in favor, only Jen, Lance and I can vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions should be two, so motion carries by a vote of three to. Um I'll go back in a second, but the the regular school committee meeting minutes of April tenth, two thousand twenty-four. We do have three members here that are present that can vote, that's Ms. Luskey, Mr. Dial and I, so are there any discussion points or corrections to those minutes?
None.
Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
Um all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries by a vote of three members to two extensions, alright, we're gonna hop in the DeLorean and go back in time. To the January twenty-four. Two thousand twenty-four minutes. So only Lance and Jenna. I can vote, uh let's so do, just another motion to approve. Second by Ms. Luskey, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries by a vote of three to two, and um. February seventh, two thousand twenty-four, our agenda is uh mistaken, it's a, there's a clerical error on the uh. Scripters are on the uh on the uh agenda, it says two four, it's actually February seventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Uh the school committee, so same members can vote on this, same three members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Dial, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Luskey, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries by a vote of three members to two extensions, that should do it. Uh there is unfortunately a reason to move into executive session right now briefly.
So we could postpone this to the next meeting if that.
Is there a motion to put, this is not an urgent um or emergency matter, so is there a motion to postpone the executive session till the next meeting, it will be a lighter meeting? Motion made by Mr. Evans, seconded by Ms. Luskey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries unanimously, we'll table that to the next meeting. Uh that brings us to the last item, which is adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn? Please. Seconded by Mr. Evans, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries unanimously, means adjourn, thank you all so much for your participation. Have a great evening.
As your new secretary, I will not compliment you for at least a year, so.